Good morning. It's Thursday, April 1st, 2021. We got slightly delayed due to some technical difficulties. We're sorry about that. There may be a slight change in how this meeting is conducted as far as hearing and seeing. We're gonna start. It's now 10:15. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Dolph, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To freedom of the body, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, equal, justice for all.
Okay, so I'm gonna power through this to try to get back on time, and we're at a stop at 12:30 for one. First item is approval of the minutes for March 18th, 2021 regular meeting.
Seven seconds.
Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next is approval requisitions for April 1st, 2021. I'll do that in the amount of $867,634.54.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you want it?
Yeah, so we have a discussion portion.
Yes.
Jeff will lead us in that discussion portion before the motion is voted on.
For two minutes.
Two minutes. Yeah, thank you. So this is just a little information about it. I'm gonna be referencing the presentation chronicle for Capitol. 911 telephone system. We currently utilize a very specialized system here. And so we have been discussing with Motorola Solutions the upgrade of the system that was originally installed in 2008. This is an important thing. It's, this system has been going for 13 years. It's an end of life. We do have a fault that's currently on it, on the existing system that we can't solve in the existing system. We have to move on to a new system here. With IT and the IT support, we elected to pursue an update, upgrade with Motorola to the full next generation I3-based system that's going to give us the ability text to 911, video, audio, telematics, all those things. Motorola Solutions has engaged with us, and it's built on a IP network, integrates with our CAD, integrates with radio. It is the solution for our future here in Jefferson County. And so with that being said, we submitted the requisition on negotiated hardware, software licenses, project management, training, testing, 24/7, 365, system monitoring, all-inclusive updates on site services and maintenance for five years for that requisition.
Any other discussion from commissioners? Just quick thing, so residents know this is a up-to-date E911 communication phone system. We expended money to get with more modern times and better quality systems for county residents. That's not right.
And it is, it's over the amount that was allocated in capital outlay. I think it was about four, it was four seventy?
It was four eighty in capital outlay.
So this is over, a little bit over there, but we do have money in capital outlay to spend on this.
We need a motion to approve this, right? The motion's on table.
It's on the table, and it's included in your requisitions, but it wasn't until large purchase that I saw that the commission needed, you know, need.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Tabb, anything? Are you still there, Commissioner Tabb?
Yes, I'm still here. I don't have any questions. Thanks.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Question passed, major sir. Next up is approval of accounts payable for March 25th, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $63,167.79. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Next is approval of accounts payable for April 1st, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $1,597,964.64. Any discussion? Just to note, a large chunk of that is the contribution to the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency for their normal contribution, the vehicles, 200,000 in insurance costs and so forth. So that's why that number is so large. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next is approval of manual checks for April 2nd, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $10,611. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next is approval of payroll for March 18th, 2021. I'll move that also in the amount of $273,086.73. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any announcements?
No, I do not have any, no.
Okay. The announcements will move to public comments?
If there's anyone who would like to make public comments, you can use the raise your hand icon or send me a chat, and I will unmute you to allow you to make public comments.
Just print it out, the information.
Oh, oh.
Hello?
Sir, are you trying to make public comment?
Doesn't look like I have any data for public comment.
Okay, well, that's fine. We'll keep moving along. If someone pops up, we can reassess that. We're gonna move to item number one. It's Ms. Banks online, approval of employment.
She is online.
Are you there, Ms. Banks?
Okay, Andrew, you should be unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Hi, good morning.
How are you doing?
I just want your approval of a new employee. He is replacing an appraiser that retired last year, March 17th. And I did not replace him right away due to COVID. So now I have a new person I want you to approve, Mark Thompson. He's a lifelong resident of Jefferson County. He comes from Loudoun County Government Rural Property Department. So he has like 10 years' experience. I do believe he got hired at the commute. And he has been approved by the property valuation committee, so he will get paid out of my assessor's valuation, and the money is there. So I'm just asking for your blessings.
Okay, you said Mark Thompson?
Yes, and his annual pay will be $40,000 grade four.
What is the start date?
He started this past Monday.
What was that date? That was March?
29th.
29th. I'm moving to approve the hire for Mark Thompson for $40,000 grade four, starting March 29th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Banks.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Okay.
Mr. Thoram wants to reschedule since we're running behind and he has another appointment.
That's fine. Let's put him on the next agenda. All right, we're moving along to item number two. Phil Gordon, Finance Director, Hanson, request capital outlay funding for emergency purchase of accident reconstruction software. Derek, can I join us? Chief Deputy, you can pull the chair over to if you need to.
Morning, how's it going, Stan? I wrote, I wrote would be my court of recognition expert on accident reconstruction. We use a system called Total Station. The same system we have, and now is obsolete and so on, or working. And I'm gonna let my investigator, my accident investigator, explain what they do and how we use it for.
So the Total Station basically is a surveying piece of equipment that allows us to do very accurate measurements on not only outdoor crash scenes, but also indoor privacy. The original purchase was made at least 13, 14 years ago, along with the crash software. Due to technology upgrades, those systems no longer talk to each other. I worked with Andrew and IT just to have a workaround. The Total Station we're requesting would now be a one-man system. In other words, we set up the base, and I would be able to do the scene with just one person instead of using two, because we use a prison pole for measurements there. Again, it keeps us on the leading edge of technology for investigations of crimes, crime scenes. It's important for court documentation, for juries to have good deliberation, and the most accurate measurements. It also decreases the amount of time that routes would need to be closed to complete these investigations.
Okay, is Michelle on also?
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
I'm here. I just wanted to recommend that we approve this purchase because the software is obsolete, and it's no longer working with the upgraded computer equipment that we have. Unfortunately, the funds were not included in the department budget or in their capital outlay request for fiscal year '21 or for fiscal year '22. So this would require a budget revision. Since this is an equipment or a capital outlay type of purchase, I would recommend that we fund it with the Capital Outlay Fund. The department has indicated that they will apply for a grant for this, and I believe they've already submitted the grant application packet. They should know in about a month if the grant will approve funding for this. However, because it is needed, I want to make sure that the funding is in the Capital Outlay Fund, regardless of whether the grant is approved or not. So I just want to make sure that the motion is indicating that the purchase of the accident reconstruction software is approved, and that funding will come from the Capital Outlay Fund contingent upon whether or not the grant will pay for all or part of the actual funding.
Thanks, Michelle. I'll move to approve $34,190 for purchase of replacement accident reconstruction software with funding from the Capital Outlay Fund as contingent upon grant approval for this emergency purchase.
Second.
Any discussion? There are no, and all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, we are back. Number four is Robert M. Frain, Mayor, and Daryl Hennessy, City Administrator, City of Charlestown, Jefferson. Are the mayor and city administrator on?
Well, actually, Commissioner, this is Daryl Hennessy. Actually, the mayor just stepped out briefly. Our internet is down, so we're on via telephone today, so we apologize for that.
That's fine. We're probably over here, obviously, too, so.
Got it. So I guess I could start, but like I said, hopefully the mayor will be back here really quickly. Or if we could just wait a moment, I could go get the mayor and bring him back. What do you prefer?
I think we can proceed. I think if you could just give us a quick rundown of what exactly this is so the county residents understand what's going on here.
Sure. So this is similar to a request that the city had sent to you last year. The mayor's coming in right now. Mayor, they moved us up, or, so they're ready for you.
Great.
We've got President Compton.
Good morning, President Compton and County Commission. Thank you for making time for us today. Basically, what we're, is it on?
Yep.
Basically, what we're looking for is an order approving an annexation of 1.274 acres, or, yeah, 1.2724 acres. I think you have it in your pocket.
Yeah, we saw it.
Okay, so the proposal, I guess, is right before the roundabout on Route 115, or George Avenue, or George Street, rather. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I just ran up the stairs.
Okay, so I guess the mayor, this tract of land, there's a portion of that already in the city limits, and this tract is not. So the public is aware, the county commission, this is annexation, they're asking to be annexed. So the county commission is, I'm not actually obligated, but it's a ministerial act on our part if the applicant is requesting to be annexed. So that's essentially what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That's correct, yeah.
All right, so seeing that, I'm ready to make the motion to approve the proposed order approving and confirming the annexation to the city of Charlestown. A parcel of real estate contains 1.2724 acres of land, presently located in the Charlestown District, Jackson County, West Virginia, conveyed by Mary R. Klein and others, and now owned by Arcadia Land Incorporated, as provided by West Virginia Code 6-8-6-4 and 8-6-4A, annex without an accolade.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
All right, we're a little early, so I'm gonna jump to, I'm gonna jump to this actually. Number 12, discuss policies and procedures concerning the conduct of public hearings and commission meetings. Commissioner Dolph, is that yours?
Yes, I put this on the agenda. What I've noticed is when we have a public hearing, we do not vote on item at night. So, and I can't figure out why, I could never figure out why we didn't do that. The BCA does it. They vote at night, planning commissions, they vote at night. This body, for some reason, has kept the written comment open. The written comment period open for two more weeks. And after doing some research, I noticed that this is not state code, nor is this a county commission policy. It was basically, a policy was implemented by the former commissioners, commissioners, I guess. And, you know, everybody wants to talk about transparency. And we have a public hearing, we have people that come in this room, and they have their public hearing. There is people, one side or the other, for the public hearing, are very passionate. And then they delay the vote that night to have it at another meeting when these people are not in front of them. And I feel that was a very cowardly way to do business, and it is certainly not transparent. And quite frankly, the board, the county commission board that did this when they were in office was probably the most anti-business county commission that this county has ever seen. And I just wanted to bring this up to your attention, Chairman, that this is not a state policy. This is not even voted on county commission policy, and that we should move forward to be more transparent. We should vote on public hearings the night we have, and that's all. I saw it.
So from my standpoint, I've been with the commission for like over four years now. I had just assumed it was state code that required us to open the period two weeks prior to, after the public hearing. I guess that's not the case, so I was just, there's no formal resolution or policy adopted by any county commission previously to institute that either.
It was just kind of the common practice of, you know, commission years, not years ago. Well, it's been pretty long from now. And so the fact just got used to delaying it for two weeks and republiek hearing. We would, you know, we put it on the agenda and then did it on for two weeks. But it was never codified in a policy, or even the policies that would be relevant, or something that required you to keep it open for two weeks. And there's nothing in the state code that required you to keep it open.
My question is, are we even following state code as far as public hearing goes?
Depending upon, you know, the governing legislation on a particular issue, it's possible that you may not be. Sometimes the state code is silent, but sometimes it indicates when you should, when you should act. And there are, there have been instances where the need of the first weeks would not have been considered state code.
So I guess my question is too, Jefferson County Commission is the only entity in this entire county, I think, that is doing this. I have not seen BCA, Plaine Commission, other government entities, municipalities, all of them being acting after the public hearing.
And to be clear, if you were from New York, the public hearing that gave you pause and you wanted to investigate, where you can always, just, you know, just like a judge, say, we want to leave it open so we get some more information on this. But, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be a standing practice that you leave it open for two weeks for every item.
Okay, any, do you have your hot today?
Well, I definitely see the speech point of like, having to vote in front of the people. As long as the public can reach out to us for the meeting, communicate with us, that's a problem.
We always advertise, so we do have it in the policies to advertise for public hearing. Anytime the state code will indicate, you know, how you advertise and how long you have to advertise. We might get, we, we may get some comment during this to be feeling a bit open, but it's rare. Most of the time, people will reach out before the public hearing.
Commissioner, how about Jackson, anything?
Yeah, I agree with what Steve has said, and I just think it drags it out. It's an impediment by leaving it open for two weeks and not taking action in front. Or three weeks, however long we leave it open, and not taking action at that night, it backlogs a lot of stuff. So I think we need to, we do, you know, change that.
Commissioner Tabb?
Well, I have mixed feelings on it. A lot of times after a public comment, I verify some of the comments to make sure the information provided is accurate. So for me, that, that two weeks is worthwhile. But also, I understand the thought that expressed that, you know, we should vote in front of the people that are there for the public hearing also. So I'm sort of ambivalent. If it's not in state code, it's not required, so I'm okay with the proposal. See how it goes. You can always change it back.
But, I mean, all we really need is unanimous consent. There's nothing in policy right now. We're just saying we're following state code. Nothing needs to be changed because it wasn't in the policy anyways. So we all have unanimous consent that we will now take action after public hearings. Yes, Commissioner Tabb?
That's okay with me.
Okay, so that takes care of number 12. No action is needed as far as votes. A little early. My gosh, we're actually ahead scheduled now. Who would have thought? Okay, I'll jump to 13 real quick. So discuss waiving permitting fees for new businesses in Jackson County for a set period of time. So the county, we start, I'm trying to figure out how we can use this federal government money to tune in $11 million. I think we need, a portion of that needs to be given back to small businesses in the county. I want to explore the option of potentially using some of the, to waive permitting fees for either new businesses or additions to existing businesses. I think that's one way we can give it back. I know there's some businesses currently in the county trying to get started, and this is a costly amount for them to get off the ground. I think it's one area where local governments that can help, help private, I think it's master, I'm sorry, I'm done. I think it's one area where local government can help get some of these small businesses off the ground in Jackson County. This is just the initial discussion, if it's even a possibility. Michelle, what level could we do that at, or what period of time could we set that for? Any info?
We haven't received the funding yet from the federal government, first of all. When, it's actually supposed to be distributed to the state within 60 days of when it was approved, and then the state's supposed to distribute it to us about 30 days after that. So it's pushed back from 60 days to 90 days. They also haven't released any official guidance. However, if we were to develop a program like this to potentially help people in the community, whether that be residents or businesses, we would probably need to establish some sort of guidelines or an application process so that we're sure that we are following a set process and that we're not arbitrarily giving it to one business and not another business. So I think it's a good idea. I just think until we receive the guidance, we need to kind of table it, or until we have additional information and we develop an actual formal program to implement a process like that.
Okay, that, this is the initial discussion of it. Commissioner Tabb?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, would need legal advice, if that is even possible. It's a little bit, in my viewpoint, I know it's not exactly the same, but like taxes, everybody has to pay their fair share. And so what do you, what do you categorize as a small business as compared to a large business and all that? So, yeah, I need to hear from legal on it, too, but it is an interesting concept, if it's possible. I don't know.
I guess my question is, this commission previously has waived permanent fees for fire departments, which are private corporations. How is it any different than us waiving fees for individual other private corporations or businesses? So I don't think we're actually, I mean, we've been doing that, and I think the precedent already been set as far as that's concerned. What stops the small business of walking into the county commission requesting we waive their permitting fees? We've already done it.
I think the difference between small business and the fire departments is the fire departments are, in some instances, considered quasi-governmental because they do serve a public interest versus being out there for profit. But that would be a question for our legal advisor, and it would also be something we would need to address in proposing the formal plan for whatever program you wanted to establish.
Okay, I mean, we, this is just the initial discussion. We don't have to get into those detailed jacks.
I have a question for Michelle, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head or not. What do we bring in, or what do we generate from permits for new businesses? Because it's not like new businesses are, you know, knocking on our door to get in here. So what do we generate?
And we had a call and told me she didn't pass. I said, I don't know. And she goes.
We're getting a flat reduction of a percentage.
Yeah.
You know, say, hey, we'll waive 25% of permitting fees for all new businesses or businesses that want to expand.
No, I just want to add, certainly, this is something I think certainly we should see before, we should look at the guidelines with this $11 million for going to receive, but this is something that I am 100% behind if the guidelines allow us to do this. And maybe, we have to look at, we have to get, first off, we have to see money. There's a process that's important, I guess. And then, but something I would get behind 100%, maybe waive, waive the permitting fees for all businesses, new businesses for the next, yeah, remaining part of this year. Yeah, but I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you put it on agenda. I'm glad we got this started. I think it's a way to say, hey, Jefferson County, we're here, and we're open business, and, and we understand that it's tough times, open businesses, and during COVID, and here's a little help we're going to give.
Anything else, Commissioner Tabb?
No.
Commissioner Dolph, first point, previous commissions have been very anti-business, in my opinion. This county commission, I want to be very pro-business. I think this is one option that can help lift smaller, new, up-and-coming businesses in the county if we can legally do it. So let's re-approach this at another meeting, maybe staff can look into this a little bit more, give us an update. All right, I think we're good with that. A little early. We might have people on, so let's move to number five. Introduce and appointments to the following Jefferson County Planning Commission, two, three-year terms, ending March 31st, 2024, and Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission, three-year terms, ending March 31st, 2024. So I think, first, I think Matt Knott is on there, and Mike Shep for.
Matt Knott's here.
Oh, God, these masks, man. You must be a different person. They're working in the door. Okay, so.
And Mike Shep is online.
Okay. Matt, if you want to come up and instantly question for us?
If there are any, I mean, I'll ask you the obvious question. Why would you like to keep serving? Well, I'm a lifelong Jefferson County resident, and I have certain businesses here in the county. And I think we need to do what we can do to assist people through the process and make smart decisions about, you know, people asking for exceptions that make sense. You know, what we can do to streamline the process. You guys were just discussing the fees. I do think it's pretty burdensome when you come to the county to try to do anything. I'm actually working on building a house right now, and there's a lot of things I think that can be streamlined to help make the county more welcoming to people looking to come in here and develop.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Tabb?
No, no questions.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Shep on the phone?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
How are you doing, Mike?
Well, I've been, I've been on the commission for three years. I'd like another three-year term. I have the time, the energy, and the interest to serve. I heard with interest your motion about. Uh, I heard with interest your, your motion about reducing the, um, for small businesses. I'd also like to see the time reduced to have a small business process go through the process. Right now it takes about two years. Uh, that's more burdensome one than, than, than the fee, I, in my opinion. And, uh, that's, that's a, an effort that we've started, but we have a long way to go to complete it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have.
Any questions from anybody?
Yeah.
All right, I'll open nominations.
I'll nominate Matt and Mike.
The two, three-year terms ending March 31st, 2024 to the Jefferson County Landing Commission.
Yes, sir.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Take care, Mike. All right, next up is the appointments to Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission. I think the first applicant, um, is Martin Burke on the phone? Martin, can you hear us?
This is yourself muted.
Um, can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you, Martin. Can you hear us?
Yes.
The obvious question, why would you like to be reappointed? I, I know you've been on this board for quite some time.
Uh, yes, I've just completed my 12th year. Uh, 10 years of that have been as chair. I have, um, three projects that I want to complete before rotating off. Um, Jefferson County Historic Preservation Fund, uh, the Duffield Depot Rehabilitation and transferring the land that we, the commission owns to the National Park Service on the Shepherdstown Battlefield. If I can complete those things, uh, I would be well satisfied with my time on the commission.
Any other questions for, Mr. Burke, from anybody? All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. John Deemer?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, how you doing?
We're doing well, thank you this morning.
Uh, same question I posed to Mr. Burke, why would you like to continue on?
I'd like to continue on to assist, uh, Mr. Burke and the other commissioners in ongoing projects such as Duffield Depot, um, the extension of Route 342 to Virginia, uh, Civil War Battlefield sites, multiple projects that document African-American heritage, uh, federal nominations of national register sites and local nominations as Jefferson County Historic Landmarks.
Any questions from other commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next on my list is. Reese?
Hi. Yeah, I'm here. Good, how are you?
All the, same question I posed to the previous two applicants, why would you like to serve on this board?
Um, well, I already volunteer with the commission. I recently wrote a grant with their backing and working on a county landmark nomination. I regularly, um, attend the meetings and work closely with them. And, um, I just have a passion for history and interpreting and sharing that in a meaningful and accessible way.
Good.
Any other questions, Commissioner Tab or commissioners? Pretty light questions, Dan. I think it knocked everybody off this morning, you're like 45 minutes late. All right, now, thank you, ma'am, I guess that's the only question. Uh, next applicant is Guy, the Studi. Okay. Okay, so I think those are all the applicants. So I'll open nominations, there are three, there are three, three-year terms. So are there any nominations?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like, first of all, say, I wish Mr. Guy would be here. I'm new, uh, on this board and I would like to at least hear from him. Um, and, and that would be just letting you know that's the only reason I would not, I would not nominate, you know, for these folks to, they show up for the interviews. So I want to nominate Martin, John and Addison.
Any other nominations? Our nominations are closed. Uh, we'll do this as one motion. All those in favor of appointing Martin Burke, um, sorry, I'm getting another, John Deemer and Addison Reese to three-year terms ending March 31st, 2024 to the Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're running a little early, let's jump back to. We might jump, I think we're done with that. County administrative reports, Mark Train, we're going to head to you real quick.
Okay.
Mark Train funding discussion, that.
Okay, yes. So I'm not sure, um, we received a letter from the state hearing on several days, basically to say that the $700,000 that they were going to get to the Mark Train funding, they're not going to provide to Mark. We provide that claimant, their last payment was March 31st. Um, so $700,000 were being unpaid. I've been having meeting, I have a weekly meeting with the cities for COVID-19 Task Force, we talked about it there. I've had, um, some meetings with legislators, the ones that we could get, because they're busy, and the mayors to kind of figure out what's going on with this funding. We don't think that Mark knows right now, but the Mark, we haven't heard anything from Mark. So we don't know what their stance is right now. It may be that they've received funding through the most recent stimulus and they're made whole and they don't really care. I don't think that that's probably going to be the case, but that, you know, that is a possible outcome. Um, there are very few people riding the train right now because of COVID. I don't know if that trend will continue. Um, but in our discussions on the COVID-19 Task Force, which has just kind of turned into like a county task force, um, and that Gavin is on that, in that group, and they see really big possibilities for the Mark Train and Hilltop and the tourism initiative, where people would ride a Mark Train into Harper's Ferry and then go, you know, to the Hilltop. And I think that that is, I agree that that's an untapped model, but we need to save the Mark Train in the meantime, because I think once it goes away, we probably won't get.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm still, we're still investigating, trying to figure out how Mark feels about that $700,000. We have confirmed with the state that money is not forthcoming from the state. Uh, the auditor had pledged that money and then apparently the, there was an opinion saying that the auditor couldn't give the money. And so that $700,000 is a shortfall of money that the state had promised Mark this year.
So to that point, I mean, I know Senator Manchin is a pretty powerful senator right now, the US Senate. Uh, I don't know if this actually went through or not, if Chuck Schumer got a bridge to Canada, a tunnel, if I'm saying, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, if any of Senator Manchin's representatives are listening in on this meeting, I hope Senator Manchin seriously, uh, looks to helping the Eastern Panhandle getting a Mark Train funding here. Really the only growing area of the state by far, with a few other exceptions. Or even a bridge from, uh, West Virginia, Maryland, solid residents, someone to go through that one-lane road by the mountains as they start falling down. So Senator Manchin, if you can hear us, we can use some help out here in Jefferson County, so.
And I have that, I have that vocal signs with Keith Mackintosh, because Senator Manchin is really powerful right now, and he's on the. So, you know, they said typically they don't give funding for operations, but that can be changing. Um, but yeah, I mean, the problem for Hilltop is going to be that autumn event, which is popular. Because if they're coming over on the weekend or in rush hour, you know, their, their memory is that they sat in that autumn. Um, so, you know, I really do think that the trend in tourism is really untapped and I think that it would increase ridership on Mark. We get people during, they could also take in track. It's mentioned in the state tourism guide, um, so I'm continuing to work. And we, I did mention everyone that the Senator Manchin is very powerful right now. I as much said that to his representative, so. Um, so I'm continuing to kind of figure out what's going on and trying to find funding, you know, for the shortfall this year. Apparently it, there is some budgeted item for next year's for FY '22.
I mean, the Fed is very run like an athlete, Miami. He's, Manchin needs to get his hands out there and just start grabbing something, pulling back to West Virginia. So that's, that's one issue that we need the train. The county cannot pay the train. There's no possible way.
And I have said as much, that we do not, you know, we pay for it once, but we do not believe that we should have to pay for it. That's not the model in any other, in any other state that has a county train and is always paid for on the state level. Um, almost exclusively. And if the, if the localities contribute anything, it's very small.
Yeah, I mean, our budgets just can't even come support that.
Right, not year after year.
Yeah. Uh, extension of COVID-19 employee policies.
Okay, this is the state policies we've been extending. We extended it through March 31st. Um, it's basically the COVID season, they expanded that in a way. I have not had any employees taking advantage of the expanded F L A recently. Um, we are continuing to see a few people take COVID leave if they're testing positive and haven't been vaccinated yet, um, or they're exposed and have been vaccinated. Um, so I did know, it's, it's not possible very much right now to expand those policies because we have, a lot of our workforce has been vaccinated and not many employees are using them because they're taken.
Yes, I guess, I mean, vaccinations are open to 16 years or older, I would say, West Virginia. A lot of people have utilized vaccines or gotten one dose. I, I don't see the reason to continue this. And that's just my prerogative. What does anybody else say? Commissioner Tab?
Um, I'm somewhat concerned with news that the variants are evident, have occurred in Jefferson County. So, um, you know, we don't have precise numbers, but, uh, they seem to be more transmissible and so forth. So, um, I'm, I do not want to change the policies at this moment.
Anybody else? I mean, I'll move that we terminate the COVID, uh, employee, COVID-19 employee policies as.
They already have, they actually have.
Okay, so. There's no.
Yeah, it would be starting today.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's March or some reason. There's no action, unless there's a motion to extend that.
And I, if I could just think back on that, a little bit, I did attend, uh, uh, Zoom meeting last night at seven for a regional planning for a really, a big regional vaccination clinic that would be helping here in Jefferson County. It would be for the region Jefferson, Berkeley and Morgan. It would be held at the track. Their goal is to do 10,000 a week. Um, it would be supported with the National Guard, WBU Medicine, and it's providing support. They've already been able to site, it would be a drive-through clinic, you wouldn't even get out of your car. They put, you know, they give you the vaccine and then, you know, they, we go to an area, have you wait for 15 minutes and then you would leave. They think that, um, the space is unlimited, it's just the amount of vaccine that we can get. Um, so, uh, they did, they did say on that call, one of the state representatives said that he thinks the vaccination numbers are actually higher for the Eastern Panhandle. The problem is that the VA system hasn't caught up because many people are getting them through their work in Virginia or Maryland where they're moving. Um, so he does think that our numbers are higher, but the state is committing, committed to getting the Eastern Panhandle's number higher. Um, and so to do that, their goal is to do 10,000 a week through this drive-through.
So, I mean, that, and I understand with Commissioner Tab's variants remark, I mean, think of we have 500 variants in the next two years. I mean, at some point, we have to reassess that. There's a clear change and people are getting re-infected with another variant or something. I mean, from what Stephanie's saying now, that, that need hasn't really been utilized in the past few months.
We've had a few, we haven't had anyone even funded F L A, a couple of them. Um, we have had a few people use the COVID-19, but I'm seeing those numbers.
Okay, so I mean, unless there's a motion to extend it, and then the, it sounds like it's just expired as well.
Well, and one, one thing with the, um, that did come up on the call last night, it sounds like they have pretty much all their resources, it's going to be supported by the National Guard. WBU's given their staff, um, they might need iPads, so they're making an request to the hospital right now to their IT department to see if they have iPads, but that might be something, you know, maybe we look at our COVID-19 funding or something like that. To check people in.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Tab, anything to say?
I would like to make a motion that we extend the COVID-19 employee policies through, um, the end of June and reevaluate then.
Is there a second? All right, motion dies for Phil in a second. Stephanie, we're going to, we're going to jump back to the regular schedule, if that's okay. Um, we're on agenda item number six. Um, it's Lynn Field, Probate Office Quarterly Review. I think she emailed that out to the commissioners. Oh, yeah, why? Do you want to make a motion?
I move we convene as a fiduciary review board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're a fiduciary review board. Is Ms. Fields on the phone?
She is.
Are you doing, Lynn?
Lynn, this is yourself muted.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Good morning, um, I'm here from the probate office, the county clerks, to, um, present a list of wills, um, excuse me, of accountings and waivers that have met all of the requirements, um, of our office and are before you to be, um, approved to be closed.
Okay, uh, I know you emailed us, uh, sweeping saw those.
Yeah, mhm, yes.
I reviewed them, is anybody else reviewed them? All right, so I always forget to, is any motion to approve the quarterly review?
Yes.
Okay, so I move we approve the quarterly review for the probate office. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passed. Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Thank you so much, thanks.
All right, let's jump back. Stephanie, County Administrative Reports.
I move we convene.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're, we're back at the county commission. Everyone can talk about this order now, usually sharper than that. All right, now we're going to jump back to County Administrative Reports. Discussion of funding allocated to Jefferson County in the American Rescue Plan COVID Relief Bill.
So I don't know much more about this than I did in the bill tax, other than it can be used to, um, plus some of our budget holes, but there are restraints on that. Um, Michelle thinks she can, looking at our video lottery numbers, we were actually on track to hit the highest mark that we had hit in a while. Um, so she's working on those numbers. Um, it can be used for broadband for infrastructure. Um, so, I mean, we'll have, and anything that's related to COVID-19, obviously, bringing vaccination clinics, et cetera. Um, but that's all I know. I only have the original, like, very broad, broad guidance. I'm waiting for the treasurer or someone else to provide more detailed guidance on this. But we haven't got it yet. I know that it will come in two phases. The first one is going to be, as Michelle said this morning, um, and it's interesting that the localities are getting theirs directly to them, but I think ours is coming to the state. So we've got half this year and half, um, the next year. And it's, uh, a little, $11.08 million to the county. And then the cities are also getting, you know, Charles Town's getting $2 million, so the cities are also getting an allocation as well. Um, and it's not like the care is funding the four workers, the state actually has allocated directly to the county.
Okay, I guess the internet broadband stuff is always a concern of all county residents. If we can use that for that, that's why the discussion with Lee Thorne, D O H, with in so far.
Yes.
If we can coordinate road projects and drive the costs significantly lower, we lay conduit and then lease that conduit to the internet companies and make it run fiber into internet to those areas. That's a secondary revenue source for the county in perpetuity also, so.
Yeah, I know, we, we had a broadband committee meeting yesterday. And we talked about that and, um, Region Nine has the, has an employee who is taking the studies and looking at them. In the short term, I think we can provide, he said we can hit about 89% uh, using wireless right now. And then broadband will be a long-term condition. So, um, we'll be probably becoming an employee condition. Our next meeting is at the end of April and then asking you to apply for grants that are eligible for funding due to the area, so.
Does Wi-Fi, other big towers, that I mean, I could destroy farm land and stuff too.
They're all, most of them are existing.
Existing?
Mhm.
Okay.
So they just put them all up from the existing towers.
Okay. All right. So that's all you have for that, I guess.
That's all.
Sheriff requests to move home and find office to say Margaret second floor.
So this is in the ongoing agenda item. Um, he is requesting the space that the that we have promised to the magistrate's when we do that. All of those construction projects are on hold. Uh, the magistrate emailed me and he that they don't care if the sheriff moves into that space in the meantime. Um, but they, you know, they still want their second quarter whenever we have the funding or whenever they get fourth magistrate. So.
So you made a motion to, we're better.
Uh, yeah, maybe just looking at this consent to say that it's okay to start moving them into that space. And then all of the magistrate know that we are aware that they, you know, it's only in the meantime.
Okay.
And you know, if, if that, we have to look for that project.
So it sounds like they're fine with that. So do we have unanimous consent to allow the sheriff to do this?
Yes. I would add that, just make it very clear that it is a temporary move.
So we, we agree collectively, unanimous consent, this is a temporary move. The sheriff, that means six months or six years, depending on whether renovation may or may not occur. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, review of purchasing policy.
Oh, I put this on here because we've had people, um, you know, we're getting the requisition, but they've already made the purchase. And sometimes they've already taken custody of whatever they're purchasing. So they're not really following the purchasing policy. If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, this space isn't going to be used for a pre will be for it. So, uh, you know, for example, we haven't purchased this boat since yet. We've asked for your, we asked for your approval this morning. But the cruisers I do approve this morning had already been ordered and are on their way.
Okay, so in that regard, policy and protocol need to be followed.
Yes.
I mean, there's no action needs to occur here that's already ingrained.
It's already in the policy. That's just not being followed by.
So I guess this is a moment where hopefully collectively us as the unanimous county commission say you need to follow this protocol or there's gonna be other issues.
Right. Or, I mean, the commission has the authorities. They know we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna approve it.
Can you send out all the parts like that?
I've reminded.
Because I'm sure when he hears things have been lax for various reasons, and maybe they just need a friendly reminder. But some, especially your new elections, even though.
And I, I don't think it wasn't this current sheriff who was.
Okay. So, yeah, there's, there's been numerous issues as a result of changing the sheriff's office that maybe we're not aware of until a few weeks ago and stuff. So not a surprise. I guess my other thing is, I guess, is that all you have here? So collectively, we agree that Stephanie will send out a reminder to all the elected that this is how things need to occur.
And we'll do that. And then, I mean, I think as your staff, we're really gonna start reporting that and say, you know, this is an issue and we're not gonna like pick up for you. I think the commission are gonna say, don't take, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, that's the way it is. I mean, that's policy. If you want to follow the policy, if you want to change the policy, you can do that another time. As of right now, that's what it is. Uh, next, ambulance fee collection policy.
Uh, so this is just a request since COVID, we haven't had in-person payments. Um, you know. Those in-person payments, we do have a collection box outside, we have mail, we have on, on. Of course, if someone had a question, they could come in and, um, you know, make an appointment if they have questions or they could call. Uh, the reason I want to do this is that we're aware we only have one person doing all of the ambulance fee work and just directly to the tax office and people for about the same amount of bills. Um, so we'd like to just take off a bill that in-person payment is an option. Um.
That's, I mean, I don't problem that with the drop offs. I mean, they can still make an appointment. I mean, I have to make an appointment for my balls vaccinated. So I mean, you can make an appointment, you can still come in and just be an appointment.
And certainly there are a number of bills that you pay already. You can't pay your electric bill and you can't pay your cable bill. So I guess you drive a market. So I don't think it's out of the realm. It's just that we have one person and it's also disruptive. You know, that employee is entitled to take vacation. Sometimes they get sick. We end up collecting the fees and she's not here and people come in in person. So we're gonna drop one little.
If we moved the collection down to the tax office, would you have, would, would your admin have enough work to do here? Or that would be, or could we add something to her?
Yes, I have plenty of work for her to do. The problem is that we currently reimburse her salary on the ambulance fee.
Okay, so that's, that's the question mark for conversations with Michelle.
Yes. And Michelle was kind of talking about that, but I have plenty of work that I have.
Yeah, I know. She's essentially doing two jobs almost right now. I think it's been like, yeah, so there's definitely enough work.
Can Michelle, next meeting bring that, any proposal? We're having to pay her. Okay. We'll look at it. I mean, I'm not saying we'll prove it, but it's, it's worth, worth a look at.
Okay.
Yeah, because I had individual job doing quite a bit. And if we can.
And we're, and I don't think that the, to be clear, I don't think she's doing, she's doing any of this, but it actually, it, it. But the, the senior, senior practices, because you're supposed to have one person collecting money and the other person, another person separately account for that. We're not doing that now. And it's been that way from the very beginning. Um, so you're supposed to, the collection and the accounting are supposed to be separate.
And I don't think that, our older generation likes to do this in person.
I know they do right now.
And we moved that tax office and, and, and down around the corner. So these folks have to walk to the tax office and they walk out. It would be so much more convenient to have a one stop shop.
Yeah.
Over there.
And then I know working people, they do collect the, um, you know, the insurance ones indicated that they cannot record collecting. Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Makes some sense.
It does.
We're not mailing, if somebody's paying ambulance fee and forgetting to pay a late fee, we're not mailing that back or refusing to take it, right? Because I, there may have been instances where I heard that someone tried to pay something. I can't recall if it was an ambulance fee or something else, where it was not accepted because they would not pay the five dollar late fee if there was a late fee attached to it.
I think she does send a letter back saying it's not the amount of change. So she'll send a letter back saying, you know, you still owe five dollars.
So we will still take that initial pay. We need to make sure that we're not just sending money back if people are trying to pay. We always add a late fee or a all-in bill.
I know that the, the tax office knows that I can send the wrong amount and they just.
Well, I mean, maybe the sheriff can talk to that at some point as to why you would do that. But, okay, that's fine. Any further, so we're gonna bring back the proposal, I guess, to see if that's impossible. Are all commissioners okay with seeing a tentative proposal?
Yeah. I, outside of, yeah, it's like out of my head right now. I can't. We'll go back and start typing issues.
I see Roger. So I've got two minutes. All right. Root, reporting expansion project.
That was for Lees.
Okay, so, and then you want some time for legislative updates?
Yeah, just a little bit of time. I don't have too much, actually.
Can you do it in three minutes?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Senate eighty-nine, the governor vetoed it through Senate House and the governor vetoed that bill. That is the bill that was exempt parking rack. Uh, yes, I don't know why they stood it. I haven't been able to figure that out yet. Um, so it was an exempted parking rack from the daycare requirements from D H H R. And I have no idea why he would veto that. And they didn't, they expanded it also to like some, like, uh, you know, some summer camps that will just facility. So they added more than just parking rack, but, um, yeah.
So that's gonna, oh, the night you're over there.
It is. I mean, what they do now is they limit how many cans children can sign up for. So because it would ruin parks because it required for the, you know, and that would ruin San Michael because you don't want to fence around San Michael for the way that it is. And I mean, there's a bunch of other requirements that they have talked about. I'm gonna see, I'm gonna reach out and see if we can put it in, if we can work around it and put it in the, in the rules that govern D H H R and childcare. I think I'm not, I'm not done yet.
That's a real mess. I don't want you to know that.
I don't, I don't understand. Because it passed pretty well. I mean, I have pretty good support from both the House and Senate. Um, and I know our, our locally delegation is really hard to do that. Um, and then S J R seven, which is the bill that is trying to eliminate the personal property tax, it does require a vote. Um, that bill died in committee, but there's another bill, H A R three, which is the House version of that. Um, and it is still alive. Um, the issue that I have, I don't have a, an issue eliminating the personal property tax, especially for businesses. I think that's why we're in pilot agreement. The problem is that those bills seek to take what is a local funding source and almost exclusively a local funding source and shift all of the authority to the state. So it would happen, you know, assessing property, putting the valuation on property. Um, and the state doesn't get property tax. That's your, your, in more medication. So that's my issue with that. The other thing is that there's a shortfall when you eliminate personal property tax. Prior bills had a way to um, supplement counties for those, for those losses. Um, there were some issues with that, but at least they were trying to supplement the losses. Now, there's a budget, if the income tax was eliminated, there's a shortfall in the state budget and they have not indicated how they were in the counties' hole from the loss of personal property tax. It does require a vote because it's an amendment to the constitution, but I think most people will vote to eliminate the personal property tax. Um, so, and again, I know why they're doing it. They're doing it because we're not competitive with surrounding states because we charge that personal property on individuals, which is why we're getting, which is why we have pilot agreement. So, but I think there are problems with, I think they haven't thought through the impact to counties. And I think they're trying to shift the control away from the local elected board, which is closest to the citizens, and put it at state. Um, and so in Charleston, you have someone who's, some, some people in Charleston don't even know that, like, they can't point to it on that. They don't know that it takes five or six hours to get it. Um, and they're gonna be evaluating, evaluating our property. And I've argued before Supreme Court that just to not understand our property, that maybe, you know, they're asking how much the house was costing. They just, it would, they couldn't fathom that house.
I was in the Supreme Court in Arnhem Land use case when I was in private practice in the, was in chief justice at the time. He asked how much these lots cost. And they, these lots were like two tenths of an acre and they were like a hundred thousand dollars. And he just, he just kind of dropped his pen. He said, well, you can go up such and such run and buy a seventy-five acre farm for less than that. You know, that's just, they don't, they just don't comprehend what it is.
Like, I don't know what's out here. Anything else?
They do know. They know. They do. I just, I use that. Excuse you.
Anything else, Stephanie? All right, Rod, I'm sorry. It's a little late, but uh. All right, Rod, agenda item number seven. Roger Goblin, Chief CIA engineer, request approval for men law enforcement impact fees for year twenty twenty-one and for year twenty twenty-two capital improvement plans and presentation of the solar facility decommissioning bond and surety policy, surety policy.
Before I start, I just want to mention one thing about the uh, hearing this afternoon. It never dawned on me that Commissioner Tab's attending virtually.
Yeah.
And I'm going to hand out hard copies of all my exhibits. I have a full PDF document of that. Should I send that to her at lunchtime? That's what I think. She can open it and just follow right through. Same stuff's highlighted in it. It's what's highlighted in the hard copies.
Yeah, that'll be fine for me, Roger.
Okay. Um, the first thing I have is a request for approval to amend the law enforcement impact fees fiscal year twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvement plans. Um, the C I P amendment removes the F Y twenty-two impact fees. Uh, C I capital improvement plan, twenty thousand dollar allocation for temporary sheriff's office space and moves it into the twenty twenty-one impact fee C I P. This allows the sheriff to move forward with the project under the current capital improvement plan rather than wait until the start of the F Y twenty twenty-two capital improvement plan, which begins July one, twenty twenty-one. Um, the project was approved by the county commission and the F Y twenty twenty-two capital improvement plan involves reconfiguration the sheriff's office to provide for more efficient layout and workspace for deputies all needed due to new growth. The revised F Y twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan, table two and table threes attached, showing the addition of the temporary sheriff's office space project to that capital improvement plan. And also attached are the C I P forms one and C I P forms two, which uh, sheriff's office would fill out. Um, that goes to the impact fees program specialist put into the capital improvement plan. So we've, we've, we backed out everything, this whole request up with all the forms that need to be filled out in the record. And then they had cost estimates for the equipment and so forth that they were going to buy. So we're uh, we're recommending approval of the requested amendment.
So any questions for Roger on this? So just basically a reallocation, especially almost?
Taking it out of the plan that starts July one and moving it into the one that ends June third. So he can go ahead and fix things up.
I just want residents to realize what's going on here. It's just moving it from one to the other. No, we're not increasing anything. We're not pulling from elsewhere.
No additional money, no additional impact fees moved in there, nothing. It's the same thing.
Okay, so I'll move to approve a law enforcement four-year twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan, law enforcement amendment number one as presented. Second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All right, that passes. So next is the solar facilities decommissioning.
Correct. I'm just gonna run down the agenda request for starters. That's presentation of solar facilities decommissioning bond and surety policy. The solar facilities text amendment, designing ordinance in Article eight, section eight point two zero, B five point, B point I requires that the property owner or developer shall uh, develop a decommissioning plan acceptable to county engineer staff and in accordance with the county solar decommissioning guidelines. And those guidelines are in this policy that will provide that all parts of the solar facility shall be removed from the premises and the land shall be restored to a condition reasonably similar to its original condition prior to the installation of the solar facility. The two key requirements in the solar facilities decommissioning bond and surety policy are um, that they have a solar facilities decommissioning plan and they, we give them guidelines in there of what information we want in that plan and then we review it. And the property owner developer required to post a bond to cover the cost of decommissioning the site upon termination of its use. And in the event the developer fails to properly decommission the site, they just walk away at the end and leave it sitting there. And you end up essentially with a solar facility brownfield. The first ten pages of the policy are an explanation of the bonding process of what is required. And this mirrors what we do under the construction bond. So we would have people come in and ask, um, there's this thing about having to bond a project, post a bond, uh, how does that all work? What do we have to do? So the first ten pages explains in detail everything that is going to be required related to bonding, both in our construction bonding and now in the solar facilities bonding. And then we would tell them this. And then they'd come along three months later after they got their project approved and say, you never told me I had to post a bond. So we, we have this form on the end of the ten pages that says, you're signing that we told you this. Um, so uh, the policy also includes a necessary decommissioning bond agreement forms and bond shortage forms. So there's three different agreement forms, one for each type of surety, which would be a letter of credit, um, a surety bond provided by an insurance company and cash and escrow, um, depending on which one they pick. Um, developer, the policy also requires the developer have a professional engineer with demonstrated experience with decommissioning solar facilities, provide an estimate of the cost to decommission a solar facility. The commissioning plan, the cost of decommission a solar facility shall be reviewed by the Jefferson County Engineering Office. Both the developer and property owner are required to execute the decommissioning bond agreement with the Jefferson County Commission. The developers required to post the surety, cash and escrow, letter of credit, surety bond as a financial guarantee to the terms of the bond and agreement. The county commission currently has a bonding policy for posting bonds to guarantee that developers construct all the site improvements for residential and commercial subdivisions or commercial site plans that are approved by the planning commission. The adoption of the bonding policy is a county commission function. Therefore, this solar facilities decommissioning bond and surety policy is presented to county commission for adoption. The county commission can adopt the draft policy presented, amend the draft policy, policy as deemed necessary and/or provide a period of time to receive comments prior to adopting. And I just wanna, when we started out to write this, we used the bonding policy as a template of how we wanted to format this whole thing. So it's pretty much kind of mirrors that. Just that uh, with construction bonding, the nature of what you're dealing with is you're bonding a project that runs two, three, five years, a section of a subdivision getting built. They demonstrate that they built it according to the approved plan and then we release the bond. Or a commercial site plan, like a Ruby Tuesday's restaurant, when they get finished, the whole thing gets released. So there's, there's a relatively short period of time that that bond um, has a. So there's, there's a relatively short period of time that that bond has a life to it. With this thing, it's different. It's, it's guaranteed to decommission it once it's used up its useful life. And we, we're hearing that these things are 25 or 30 years is what they're planning for. So you're trying to set up a policy and a procedure and a process that's going to have to run for 25 or 30 years, you know? And other people are going to eventually come in and have to deal with it because some of us will be gone at that point in time. So we, we outlined this policy, what's required and, and, and the issues with, how do you make sure you're going to have enough money in the end, like five-year reviews of the costs and so forth? And making sure the different types of sureties get renewed before they expire so that you're not left there without anything to guarantee that they're going to do what they're supposed to do. So it says that, that we're to have these guidelines to decommission the site. And on page one, if you drop down there to the last paragraph, it says, at a minimum, the decommissioning plan shall include the following. And then we just outlined everything. We, we got most of this from stuff that the solar industry people gave us that they were seeing with other jurisdictions. And we used that. We expanded on some of that. And then we even thought of things on our own that we wanted to see in there. So I, I will say that what we're asking for is more involved than what they've given us. And when, when we approached this, our take is that the reason we're having this bond is it, is that these, might say, farmers, property owners have a concern. I think that they too will not be left with a brownfield when this thing runs its useful life. And they were looking to the county to help protect them the same way we protect lot buyers in subdivisions requiring construction bonds. So that was the one aspect of this. The other is protecting the county from being liable or held liable for what results 30 years out and the taxpayers from bearing any cost of decommissioning this should the developer walk away. So we had like those three things going on. So as we went through, I wrote this, what I think is strict towards protecting the county and the taxpayers first and then the property owners second. And so if you want it slanted any other way, and I've talked to Nathan about this, you just need to tell me where you want to go. So you have, on this end of the scale, you have not requiring them to do anything. And on this end is strict and pretty tight. And that's where I think this is. You want somewhere in between, you just have to tell me.
Yeah, I, I read through all this. I know all this material too. I mean, this is pretty in-depth. I mean, we have five years, every five years if you evaluate, make sure costs are not increasing. There's mechanism for adjusting for that. I mean, it's, it is like set time periods of like 180 days where it needs to be completely done. I mean, this is pretty in-depth. I mean, so we're nowhere near the, not the free-for-all approach. If anything, you're correct, Roger. I think we're on a more stringent approach. And you obviously reviewed this, Nathan, have tweeted with Roger to make sure it's getting binding and so forth.
Yes, and we've also had our other council do help this initially with the solar decommissioning and review it as well.
Okay, and so I mean, I wanted some very pro-doable energy. I think Jefferson County has a real opportunity here to do our impact on climate change with a facility like this. We also need to be realistic and cover property owners and county taxpayers. So I think we, I mean, we've been looking at this for quite some time. I think this is a really solid groundwork for that. Any other clear comments on that?
No, the only thing I will add is there are currently three bills that Charleston now running through for decommission bonds. I don't know why they had to run through different ones, but anyway. So we might have a state decommission plan, but so is, maybe we need to wait till sessions over with, see if, obviously it's, it's going to take a while to do this.
So are you saying that the state themselves might require for anywhere in the state to be, we're going to have requirements controlling what goes on? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's it. I was hearing exactly that. So, so, so we're, our, there's a lot of hard work with this. This, obviously, the state might overrule for what they might have.
It would depend on if they have prejudice. This is our default that the counties can do whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think obviously session will be over with in a couple of weeks. So let's see what he gets pumped up by that.
We also don't have this one, a solar text amendment that.
No, I think that's really inaction.
It would certainly be put in the cart front of the way.
Yeah, sure.
But we need to do that though, to make sure if and when a county approves that text amendment, this is on the back burner for approval also.
So well, how did it work? You would put up your bonds when you get your bill from the planning commission. And you would have to go through a process a day or two. So I think, you know, the planning commission for a couple of years. And if, if you approve that text amendment today, you would definitely have to have this through by August, September. No later than, right? When you think, Alex, I'm looking.
I mean, I think I would assume how to do it sooner than that.
Yeah, well, I said no later. Yes, yes. So, so I mean, it's, so there's still a process if the county commission approves the text amendment. And then, and by the time they come to you and they have their, all their plans in place and they have to have a public hearing. And so there's, what I'm saying is, once you approve it, if you do approve the text amendment, it's just like tomorrow.
So I guess we have a public hearing for the text amendment in three weeks. We'll see what occurs at that hearing. Subsequently, we will re-approach this at that point in time. So right now, I think it's a good thing. I mean, a lot of work was done, it was great from my eyes. And I think it covered the county taxpayers, the county and landowners in that facility very well. So I mean, I guess to be continued after our text amendment hearing.
We, we have not brought this forward because we have not had a solar text amendment. Obviously, we've been working on it for a while, but yeah, the solar text amendment does contain language in it. Like you adopted in the future that direct the companies to a policy. And that's, the policy wouldn't have to be in place.
Yeah, so if it passes, then law for your purpose. If it doesn't pass, it's essentially dead because the text amendment doesn't pass. So either way, we're in the shape we need to be either one. Thank you guys. Take a five-minute break or 10-minute break or whatever you need.
Several items I believe.
Well, this is pretty much.
That's.
That's a pretty great, perfect.
I have a, I have a, it's not a taking session.
Yeah, it's a, but you're not my school name.
Yeah. You want to just send them this?
Studies that were.
Yeah. So there's my, so I think. Let's see, that's good.
All right, so we're back. We're agenda number eight, Nathan Cochran, Assistant District Attorney with a large swath of issues.
Oh, yeah, if it's okay with you, I would like to skip to item number three. On my list, discussion of possible agreement with the city of Ranson regarding storage of extra PPD items in related matters. I would inform you that our Homeland Security Director has been able to obtain a significant quantity of PPD that I was going to tell you about. He approached me, I sent a letter to Ranson. They had some storage facilities. And I sent Ranson, asking them about this issue. I made it clear that I was acting in the full conversation of the commission. I was only on behalf of our Homeland Security Director because there was a time requirement. We had to get the ball rolling to get some storage space, as you'll explain. So I believe that they brought that before their council. I don't know exactly what the resolution is.
They, that, okay, that, the resolution by the city council of, of Ranson was to allow for them to enter into an agreement with Jefferson County to store the personal protective equipment. And I'll, I'll give you a rundown and I'll, I'll give you a little background first. After your old county commission meeting, well, your last county commission meeting, we were made, leaving, all the emergency managers in the state of West Virginia were made aware that the state of West Virginia, one, needed to figure out the warehouse and around the Charleston area. And that warehouse is for all 55 counties. The amounts, the amounts of protective equipment they have there is supposed to last at least 180 days. Look at what would be used in 180 days for 55 counties. There's a lot that they have down in that warehouse. And they want to get it out so that they can receive the next 130 days worth of equipment into that warehouse as well. So they, they're, they asked us to take as much as we needed, as much as we felt that we could store. And of course, if, if I reflect back the last year, we had nothing. The state of West Virginia had relatively nothing. The strategic national stockpile wasn't up to what was necessary for all the states to trickle down to all of the counties to, to get out to our local first responders and the healthcare facilities within the state. So it, it, it comes down to, we're looking at storage for 17,000 N95 masks, which you couldn't get, you couldn't buy them. They just weren't available. But they now have 17,000, well, 17,200, the KN95 mask as well. And our local first responders can use those. You just don't use them in close proximity. You can use them in place of surgical masks or our limited one-time-use masks. So 2,200 of those, surgical, surgical mask, 39,500. Eye protection goggles or protective glasses, 490. Gowns, 39,400. The gloves, 147,600. Now that's, I would imagine that's pairs, not individual gloves, I would hope. Face shields, 2,000 and hand sanitizer, 160 gallons. So it's a lot of equipment or a lot of supplies. Last time that we got about a six-month supply, I was able to get all of it out. And we stored that in the maintenance building training room. And then from there, that was just a holding location. And I distributed all that out to local first responders, to the hospitals, the healthcare facilities and so forth. But this amount is well beyond, and as, as well as that, it would have taken up all the. it would have taken up all the space for the maintenance building. And therefore, we wouldn't be able to have meetings and things like that in the maintenance building.
Yeah, I want to add to this discussion a little bit too. Certainly, I have a problem with Ransson storing these items. I did have a discussion with Duke Pearson, Merrick Ransson. And I am very familiar where he wants to, very, very familiar with the building. He wants to store these buildings, these materials that I'm not going to mention here today, locations.
Correct.
But the building is secure. It does have a security system.
Sprinklers.
And sprinklers. And it's 14 pounds per feet. So I wanted to go ahead and move motion to to read to the user the storage space with Ransson for the PPE items.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Commissioner Tab, when you fill in, I'll see you.
She's here, so.
Commissioner Tab. Maybe she's having some internet issues. I don't know.
Oh, there she goes.
We got worried there, Jenny.
Okay.
Okay, so did you hear? Did you hear the motion? Do you want to restate your motion to yourself?
Yes, my motion is to agree to have joined, or agree to discharge the proposal about Cindy Ransson with the PPE items.
I'll second that. Any discussions? All those appearing motions, aye. Aye. opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Steve. All right, Nathan, aren't any of the remaining three items available?
Commissioner Compton, I would suggest that we go into executive session to discuss my other three items, and also item number 13, waiving permitting fees because of some potential liability that he refused. In relationship to the proposed solar tax issue, I would advise that there has been a lawsuit filed, actually petition filed or search area filed in connection to that. And I would also just inform you that...
Okay, so I move we go into executive session to seek legal advice for agenda item number eight, number one, two, and four on that agenda. Item number eight, the item 13, discussing waiving permitting fees and the solar lawsuit that has been put forth or presented regarding the testimony. Item number two. All right, any discussion? All appearing motions, aye. Aye, opposed. We're in executive session.
I move you come out executive session. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I like to move the motion that we hired outside, presented that hard people outside assault, to determine fire and ESA funding and staffing needs in Jefferson County.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Is there any more business? You come for us before lunch? Alright, so we're gonna reset. Right now it's about 12:29. We'll reconvene at 1:30 PM for administrative appeal impact fees or native suit. Alright guys, we'll see you at 1:30. So we're in recess.
It was like. I can't see.
Okay, let's see, we are. Pretty still.
You ready? You ready, Russ? Is Jay on? I don't see you.
Okay.
I think you're off already.
Jay?
Let's wait for Jane.
I am here.
Okay, so I think we're ready to go. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
We all ready to step in?
We're good. I think we're good.
We're good? Okay, so it's 1:35. We're gonna come back for recess. We're on agenda item number 10. Robert Glenn Esquire on behalf of Lowe's Hospitality Group LLC, administrative appeal of impact fee coordinator decision that conversion of 51-unit quality-end hotel near Shepherdstown into 21-bedroom and efficiency apartment with first-floor retail require full payment of impact fees. Property is described as parcel 15, that ate on map eight, and the sever found out tax. How are you doing, sir?
Good afternoon.
You have to say Stephanie. Stephanie, it's about to go to any sort of border. No, we, no, we're, no. As well, sir. Are you proceed, sir?
My apologies for the sneakers. I was, I thought this was a Zoom meeting.
Oh, you're fine.
And I apologize. My apologies. So, and probably better I showed up anyway, given your technical performance. So as a preliminary matter, I understand from doing the session today that the county engineer is proposing to submit some material today to you for your review. I have not seen this material. The material has not been provided to me. So I'm a little confused as to what's going on here. Under the ordinance, when we, when Mr. Love was here today, he submitted his application. What the impact fee ordinance says is that the impact fee coordinator says upon receipt of an application, coordinator shall determine whether development involved change in use. We think it does. And if he makes, if he makes that determination, then there should have been a process whereby he went through and made calculations, shall calculate the impact fee by multiplying the amount of the applicable impact fee times the units of development incorporating any applicable offset as defined by this procedure. Now.
Sorry, sorry, not interrupt you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Proceed really. Do I need to swear? Anybody can clarify or to. He's a representative.
He's, he's an attorney, so.
He's fine, but others, if they make.
I would swear them in before they testify.
Okay.
We don't, I don't intend to have any, Mr. Love testify today.
Okay.
But if you'd like to ask him questions, he's here for that. If you'd like to. He's certainly willing to give evidence today. So now we're in a situation where we were simply given a telephone call that said, your exemption application is denied. And then we filed the appeal. Now we are supposed to say, okay, we've given you our exemption application. We've made our appeal. The county coordinator has not provided any evidence to you. And yet the county coordinator's position is that the burden of proof is on the appellant in this hearing. And that his evidence should be given presumption of correctness. I've never, we've never seen his evidence. That seems to me to violate any notion of due process to say that I have to stand up here. I have the burden of proof, but I don't know what the evidence is against it. Now, this is a development that the Lowe's have been planning for some time. And obviously, they'd like to proceed, and they're losing money every day that they can't proceed. So we are willing to proceed today despite, despite this anomaly and violation of the law, for the record. But it seems to me it's unfair then to put the burden of proof on the appellant and to say that the county coordinator's evidence is entitled to presumption of correctness when he violated the ordinance.
I guess one question.
Well, I mean, I would not concede that it's illegal or that he violated the ordinance. But I imagine that if you want to review the documents further, that the commission would likely entertain a motion to continue if you want to bring this on a different day. Of course, you know, you'd have to waive the timeframe and the ordinance for the hearing.
Did I, my client, I'm sorry? All right, we'll proceed. Partly in fact that we think the facts are fairly straightforward and the law is fairly straightforward. And we'll look at the, and I assume we will be afforded an opportunity to come back after we look at the alleged evidence that's gonna be presented and respond.
I mean, I'm not the decision maker here, but it would seem to me that we would loosely follow a typical hearing procedure where you would present the impact fee folks would present and then you would have two people read up. That would be my recommendation to them.
I think that would just follow, too. I guess what I'm interested in is hearing your justification for not having paid him benefits rather than run around the bustle.
Yes. So with that, I'll proceed. So this appeal to us is about making sure that the coordinator follows the law before imposing taxes on the citizens of Jefferson County. Impact fees are taxes, and even though imposed at the time of the issuance of building permits, these fees are passed through to the purchasers of homes or to the tenants of apartment buildings in the form of increased rent. Now, facts again are, I think, are fairly straightforward. You all may be familiar with the food line outside of Shepherdstown. And this hotel, it was formerly a quality end, is located, is it a CVS? It's a C, Walgreens, excuse me, Walgreens. And it was operated, it's been in operation since 1998. The Lowe group purchased the property in 2007. It's been operating as a hotel since that time. With COVID-19 pandemic came, of course, the crash in the services and the hospitality industry. And the motel closed in 2020 as a result of the pandemic. So the Lowe group now, the appellant now proposes to convert the property into a residential apartment building with first-floor retail, medical, or other office space. Since 2007, the appellant has paid approximately $425,000 in real estate, real estate personal property taxes to Jefferson County. In our appeal, you'll note that I state that approximately 70% of that was paid to Jefferson County school system. I looked at the, recently looked at the Jefferson County School Board's website on the new budget proposal. And they indicated that in fact, it's closer to 75% of those taxes, that $425,000 went to the school system. That, by the way, is taxes from a property which had no impact whatsoever on the school system by definition.
Quick question. So that's not factoring any hotel motel taxes, right? That number is completely outside of that.
In addition, in addition to that, thank you for raising that, in addition to that, our estimation is that the appellant has paid close to $431,000 in hotel motel taxes since it's owned the property. And I note that since it's owned the property because we didn't go back and try to collect the information from 1998. But you're talking over 23 years. This property has been a productive taxpaying property for the county. So we're just giving you the figures that the Lowe's have paid in taxes. Now, I would note that in the hotel motel taxes, according to the budget information that I looked at for the county, a substantial portion of the hotel motel taxes go to parks and recreation.
You guys don't pay them.
Those are actually.
Your rent, the people who are staying.
Excuse me, yes, correct. Those taxes paid by, those taxes paid by guests of the hotel. Now, more generally though, so I would say that the property generates that from guests at the hotel. Of course, parks and recreation is a, is a component of the impact fees. So it seems to us that, that this property has not only paid a substantial portion of taxes to the school system, it's also paid a substantial amount of money to the Jefferson County park system, which again is a component of the, of the impact fees. As we said, we, as noted in our appeal, Mr. Low submitted, as is required by law, submitted his application for a building permit. And that was received and reviewed, I think, I believe, on a Friday by the staff. And then on following Monday, Mr. Low was informed by telephone call that the exemption had been. that the exemption had been denied and the impact fees were fully assessed against the property without any consideration of proportional impact or additional impact on the county services, on those four components, police, EMT, uh, parks and, parks, and of course the school system. So this is an appeal of that decision made by the, what I would call now on the coordinator, to reject our application for the exemption.
A quick question for you. So say I want to build an apartment building in Jefferson County. How are you different from doing that other than you have existing structure converting it into an apartment building?
That is the difference. The difference is that we're going from, well, there are two differences. The different, the first difference is we're going, we're not going from a raw piece of farmland to a structure. We're taking an existing structure which has a, which I would call a commercial use. I'm not quite sure that's the correct definition, but for now I'll call it a, or a non-residential use. And we're going to a residential use. And we're, and that, that under the, that under the law is a conversion rather than, although it's defined under your impact statute as a new development, it's really a conversion because again, the, you're, you're going not from raw land to, uh, productive, productive, uh, property. You're going from a property that's been in production, that's been in use, and you're converting it to another.
Aren't you fundamentally altering that purpose of the, of the location or building?
You are, you are, you are altering the type of use. However, you're, you're going from a use which involves the occupancy by individuals in a structure to a building which, uh, which, in which individuals are occupying for a longer term. However, I, I, I don't see what the difference would be other than the length of stay in the apartment, in the structure. And in addition to that, once you convert the building to apartment building, you have a kitchen. So it then becomes a residential structure under the code and you don't have to go out to eat.
Yeah, I guess my, my, the county needs to exercise these impact fees equally amongst individuals and so forth. I guess prior to being a quality inn or hotel, those folks staying there or whatnot, they are not actually able to utilize school systems. They don't really cause that kind of impact.
Correct.
Whereas when you revert it to an apartment type business or location, they do.
Correct.
And they have a legitimate impact because of what it now is.
Correct.
So that's where I, I have to take into account the previous use versus wanted or future use.
We, we agree with that. We agree with that, but we think that the law, I'll walk you through what we think the law uh, allows us to argue in this particular case. The, the other distinction I would make is we're going from, we're, again, our position is we're not going, for example, we're not going from a movie theater to an apartment building. We're going from a structure that houses individuals who come to stay in Jefferson County to another type of structure in which people live in Jefferson County full time. Our, our, our position is, is that there's, as to police, EMT and recreation and parks, there's no substantive difference. You're not adding additional impact by turn, by, by saying, well, these people, um, ma- make use of the parks more than hotel guests, the structure.
To that point, would those people that now live in those apartments make use of the school system more so than the ones that were just renting for a night or two at the hotel?
So that, that's the, okay, so, so that's the first point is our, our, our position is, is that, is that just as a matter of common sense, is that individuals living in the hotel, you can't say that there would be a substantial impact and it would be substantially more of an impact by turning on those three elements, exclude schools for a second, put those to the side, on those three elements, uh, which, which are factored into your impact fees. Now, on schools, I would, we would first note that we're taking, uh, we're substantially reducing the, the footprint of occupancy for this building. We take 51 motel units to 21 hotel units. And then, um, and then furthermore, the units themselves are very small. And now, we can't argue, we're not arguing today that children could not live in that hotel and we're not restricting that use. Um, however, under the statute, um, and this is under the Local Powers Act, all right? So you have two, you have two sets of, you have, you have Local Powers Act, which is the West Virginia statute, which allows Jefferson County to enact impact fees. And you have your impact fee ordinance, okay? Now, under the impact fee ordinance, with respect to a conversion, which this is, is not, remember, this is not new development. So it's not going from a vacant piece of farmland to income producing. You're simply changing the use. Statutes provides that the impact fee shall be based on the incremental increase in the fee for the additional public facilities needed for the change in use. Our position is, is that as to parks, EMT and police, there is no incremental increase. Therefore, there should be no impact fee assessed.
So the basis for that is because there's only 20 or something units? You think the addition of, how many units was it again?
Well, there, there, there are two reasons. You're reducing the amount of units available for occupancy. And also that, uh, a, a person visiting Shepherdstown, Pennsylvania to visit here has no, there's no rational distinction between that person living there for, let's say, three or four days versus that person is most, is just unlikely to interact with the police, EMT and parks as I would be living in Jefferson County, although for a year, for example. And that's, that's shown by the fact that the motel tax, you decided that the motel tax by, that I would pay as, as a guest at the hotel should go to fund the park system.
I guess my, my thing here too is, so from your scale, you're saying there's no impact. So say for instance, this body decides to waive this. So what scale does have an impact? And how do you make that determination? So if that big vacant warehouse off 340 right there wanted to convert into some one-story garden apartments with 200 units, would they have an impact?
I would say yes, yes. I, that, that's the distinction.
When you come to that determination.
Well, that, that's a distinction we want to make clear today is that we're not asking for some broad distinction between anytime you take an existing structure and turn it into apartment building, you get a free ride. Or we want, we would like you to focus and, and we think that it's valid because we think that, not my personal opinion, but impact fees have a rational use to, which is to, which is to pay for those, that additional impact that the use is going to have. So if you did have an empty warehouse, which was, which has no impact whatsoever on county services because it's just storage.
It doesn't have to be a warehouse.
Warehouse could be a movie theater, it could be anything. Our, our, our thought, position is, is that you have to have, this is a unique situation where you're going from one type of residential facility, and I use that term loosely, to another type of residential facility, okay? And as to parks, police and EMT, we don't think there's any, we don't think there's any additional impact by turning it into a longer-term residential facility versus a short-term residential facility. Now, schools, schools, okay? We can't argue that children aren't going to live there and there's not going to be an addition, uh, an additional impact because we're allowing people to live there for, let's say, a year and to have, and with a kitchen, which we have now. And, and you could, and there's no restrictions on children living there. So it may probably be a small, but we can't argue to you today that there will be no impact.
So based on what you just said there, there is an impact and a portion of the fee should be allocated because there is potential impact to the school because there could be kids.
Now, let me accept your point for the purposes of my argument. Under the Local Powers, okay? Let's go to the Local Powers. This is the West Virginia Local Powers. That allows you, the commission, to enact an impact fee ordinance, to require the payment of fees for any new development projects in the event any costs associated with the capital improvements or the provision of other services are attributable to such project. However, section also states that such fees shall not exceed a proportionate share of such costs required to accommodate such new development. Now, proportionate share is defined in the statute as the cost of the capital improvements that are reasonably attributable to the new development. And this is the important language you'd like you to focus on. Less any credits or offsets for construction or dedication of land or capital improvements, which we don't have here, past or future payments made or reasonably anticipated to be made by the new development in the form of user fees, debt service payments, taxes, and other payments toward capital improvement costs. Now, new development under your impact fee ordinance is, includes conversions. So our position is, is under the statute, we're entitled to an offset for the hundreds of thousands of dollars in real estate taxes and personal profit that this property has generated that have gone to the school system without any impact whatsoever on the school system. So we agree that, that there may be an impact, although we think it's a small impact, but that impact is more than offset by the 20, over 20 years of taxes that this property has paid to pay for that infrastructure, et cetera.
Do any other commissioners have questions for us? Go ahead.
So let me, and I'll just extend in summary. Oh, I just, I just a point on the law. This is a taxing statute from our perspective. Under West Virginia law, the West Virginia Supreme Court has held, and I'll give you sites if you want, but as a general rule, statutes imposing taxes are construed strictly against the taxing authority and are liberally construed in favor of the taxpayer. So let me just say in summary, conversion of the hotel to a smaller apartment building will have no additional impact on parks, police and EMT services and EMT services and will have some, some impact, although it needs minimal, on the schools. However, any impact on the school system is offset by the hundreds of thousands of dollars already paid by this property, frankly, which will continue to be paid in the future to the school systems and those taxes haven't paid for over 20 years.
All right, thanks, sir. We'll, we'll move to, we're good one now.
Yes, so. I want to just note for purposes of.
I'll, I'll go to the, exhibit.
Okay.
Yeah. Since, since I, I, I would just add for purposes of the record that he documents that Mr., thank you, that Mr. Goodman is pretending, has not previously been provided to the commission stating for a coffee lesson, uh, to Miss Tam, um, but an hour ago, two hours ago, something like that, because she is physically.
Binder with the exhibits, I'm going to walk through those and enter them into the record here and explain how the, uh, impact fee program specialist and I arrived at our decision that impact fees were due on the project. So exhibit one is the impact fees procedure ordinance. I highlighted some sections. And if you turn to page 25, it outlines the process for the appeal of a decision by the impact fee official. And it says that an appeal from any decision of a county official pursuant to this ordinance shall be made to the county commission by filing a written appeal on the appropriate county government form with the county clerk within 30 days following the decision which is being appealed. And then if you turn to page 26, burden of proof, it says the decision of a county official or county commission pursuant to this ordinance shall enjoy the presumption of correctness. The burden of proof shall be on the appellant to demonstrate that the decision of the county official or county commission is clearly erroneous, erroneous or contrary to the law. Uh, with regard to the decision in section D there, it says the county commission shall determine whether there's an error in an order requirement or decision made by the county official in the enforcement of this ordinance and/or determine whether the fee uh, would amount to a taking of private property or otherwise violate the state and federal constitutional rights of the applicant. And then in next, uh, section two, based on the information provided at the hearing, the county commission shall reverse or affirm in whole or in part or modify the order requirement or decision of the county official appealed from and make such order requirement decision or determination as the county commission considers necessary. And then in section three, the county commission shall render a decision on the appeal within 90 days after the filing of the appeal. Now, I want to point out that, um, that Mr. Love has not made formal application for a building permit with our office and or made application to pay impact fees. Our decision and presentations based on our understanding of the project as it was explained to the impact fee program specialist via, via conversations with Mr. Lo. So technically, there's been no formal application. Um, but we are okay with moving forward with getting a decision on it for them. Under definitions, I'm turning to page 10 in the ordinance. Going to go over a few of these because they're relevant. Uh, multifamily is a simple building or structure containing three or more dwelling units, but excluding any structure defined as a townhouse. The 20 proposed dwelling units meets the definition of, I think, like, new development is any new construction, reconstruction, redevelopment, rehabilitation, structural alteration, structural enlargement, structural extension or new use which requires a building permit. To any change in use of an existing non-residential building requiring any form of county approval and which increases the demand for one or more public facilities or services as herein defined, we believe the project meets the definition for new development. Non-residential, any use or development that is not a residential use and includes commercial, industrial and institutional uses. A portion of the project meets the definition of non-residential. Offset at credit of certain required impact fees in exchange for the provision by the applicant of, among other things, monetary contributions, dedication of land or actual construction of all or part of a public service consistent with the county's capital improvement program. The developer has not made or proposes to make a monetary contribution, dedication of land or construction of a public service consistent with the county's capital improvement plan and therefore does not meet the definition of an offset. That would be the capital improvement plan that you approve annually. Any of the things listed in there that you've approved to be funded with impact fees. And I'll talk more about that as I move along. So, um, if you turn to exhibit two, Breckenridge North Subdivision, I use as an example of an offset. This is the school site development, school impact fees offset agreement between B.C. Partners Incorporated, developer of Breckenridge North Subdivision and the Board of Education of Jefferson County. In 2009, the Board of Education owned approximately 50 acres of land on Job Corps Road for a planned elementary school which became Driswood Elementary. In 2009, the developer agreed to provide construction of a public service consistent with the county's capital improvement plan. So I'm turning to page two, section R5. Drop to the bottom of the paragraph, the county commission has the authority to provide offsets or credits against the amount of school impact fees that are imposed against new residential dwelling units in exchange for the provision of all or part of a public service, including the construction of public schools consistent with the county's capital improvement plan. The key here is it's got to be consistent with the capital improvement plan. R8, developers willing to perform the site work at no direct charge to the board of ed in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement. but subject to and conditioned upon the county commission agreeing to provide school impact fee offsets in exchange for the provision by the developer of such site work." And the total school impact fee offsets that the developer shall receive in exchange for the provision of such site work shall be an amount not less than $681,170. So that was the amount of the offset. The B.C. Partners, the developer, agreed to perform site grading, install storm drainage, parking lots, curbing, asphalt paving, and other site improvements at the elementary school site at no charge to the Board of Education. The agreement indicated the value of the work was $681,170, and as a result, the developer was granted an offset against the amount of the school impact fee for the dwellings in all their Breckenridge subdivisions.
Is that only the county capital improvement plan or the Board of Ed also?
It would be the county's capital.
Okay, so it's not just referring to the county commission's capital? Okay, I got you.
What, what you would see in the capital improvement plan is you, they have that overall wish list where they're, they're listing everything, every entity's listing everything they can, they say that they need. Their needs way, go way beyond the amount of funding that you can get to impact fees, so that answers the question.
So that's one opportunity to where someone could say, hey, we'll do this for the offset of this as was referred right here.
Correct. I think we had another one in a subdivision where they took a piece of land, it might have been an acre, two acres, and they carved that piece out because it wasn't that useful for them as far as the subdivision lots, and they deeded it to Parks and Rec, and they got a, a offset or credit towards that.
So since, you may not have answered this question, since impact fees were instituted, has there ever been a circumstance where an existing structure, I think, converted to something else, such as apartments or retail shops, previously from what their prior use was?
Yes, and I'll get to.
Okay.
Okay. The next definition, back to exhibit one, the ordinance, on page eight, extreme hardship. It says, "Extreme hardship for the purposes of this ordinance, anyone of the following conditions so qualifies as an extreme hardship case, and such qualifying cases may be conserved by the county commission as eligible for extreme hardship exemption." So it talks about cases where the total household income is less than or equal to the poverty guidelines applicable to Jefferson County. Cases where the householder, as defined by the United States Bureau of Census, has been classified as being totally or permanently disabled. And cases where at least 50% of the cost of the applicant's newer replacement home is being funded by a community housing development organization is recognized by the state of West Virginia Housing Development Fund. So as an example of an extreme hardship, turn to exhibit three. This is the impact fee calculation form, if you go Form 100 and then specifically page two. This is the impact fee calculation form for Karen Valentine for her dwelling in the Shepherdstown Tax District, map 10, parcel 19, 9.17. The applicant was a then recently divorced woman with children living at poverty level and struggling financially to provide a home for her and her children. On November 12th, 2012, the county commission granted an extreme hardship exemption for this dwelling. It is the only exemption granted to date under an extreme hardship exemption. Accrued interest must be used to satisfy the impact fee. There is no complete waiver of the impact fee. The impact fee entities are still entitled to receiving the fee amount. So Form 100, page two, shows that the impact fee amount at that time was actually $13,070. It's actually dropped over the years. And there was $5,356 in accrued interest in the impact fee entity's accounts. So that got deducted from that, and she still had to pay $7,714 balance in impact fees. Now, just so you understand this, she used up what was in the accounts as far as accrued interest on record at that point. If somebody walked in the next day with the same hardship conditions and asked for an exemption, it would be a moot point because there would be no accrued interest left to pay it anyways. So a person might have to wait several years until it builds up some more to be able to take advantage of that. The point being, somebody's paying the impact fee, and the ordinance allows, in this type of hardship, for the accrued interest to be used. And exhibit four, these are the calculation fees that we run. And you have four of them, and it's the pre-development versus post-development impact fee amounts for the proposed project. So we, we did the pre-development first floor. First floor is going to be like the drugstore, office space, commercial space. I understand is there's a second and third floor that would be converted to the dwelling units. So we run, we classify it as commercial retail shopping center, 25,000 square feet or less, and when we run the impact fee amount, and you come up with $1,805.
The commercial impact fee is very low right now.
If they were paying that, they would pay a half a percent of that. Okay.
Half a percent of the. Eighteen and five.
Right.
So that, that is virtually zero.
But this is, if, if this structure never paid impact fees, it came in before impact fees were adopted. But if it was paying impact fees today, that's what they would pay on the first floor, commercial, as it exists.
Yeah, under 1% of this eighteen and five.
Then you, they would pay half a percent of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about virtually nothing.
Right.
Commercial underneath.
But it's going to be a moot point.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to get to that.
So I, hey, you know me, I'm like.
I know, I had got him. So you turn to the next sheet, and you have the post-development, office, retail, pharmacy use, which is commercial retail shopping center, 25,000 square feet or less. It's the same square footage, it's the same use classification. You calculate the impact fee, it's $1,805. So the incremental increase is zero. So, and let me catch up here. So to determine the incremental increase in the impact fee, if any, of the proposed use versus the existing use, the impact fee program specialist calculates the impact fee amount for the existing use and the impact fee amount for the proposed use. The difference is the incremental increase. So for hotel versus commercial retail and shopping, the proposed use, it's the same. So there's no additional impact fees due for the commercial retail shopping portion of the project. So we turn to the next page. This is the, the hotel, the existing condition versus multi-family dwelling units for the second and third floor. So we run the second and third floor, it's still a commercial retail shopping center, 25,000 square feet or less. The square footage is 5,400 square feet, and the estimated fee, as it exists, would be $2,166. Turn to the next page. For the proposed change in use to 20 multi-family dwelling apartment units, the impact fee amount is calculated based on it being now a multi-family use, and the estimated fee is $4,707 times 20 units, which is $94,140. Therefore, since the post-development impact fee amount is greater than the pre-development impact fee amount, the incremental increase in impact fees is due for the multi-family dwelling apartments portion of the project. So we're taking the pre-development amount off, even though that one was really paid. I just consider grandfather Dan, and we say off what would be, be due if it was the full amount due, if it was dwelling units. And you come up with an incremental increase of $91,974. So the incremental impact fee amount reflects the magnitude of the incremental impact. It's, it reflects, you know, what's the impact of the new use versus the existing use on the school system, on parks and rec, et cetera. For us, it's, it's a mathematical equation that's pretty simple to follow. And that's how we determine the incremental increase.
So you, with all those factors in, you're looking at this property no different than any other property you engage in this type of facility.
Correct, and I will give you an example. Okay.
I was going to make sure it's.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, you got to keep in mind, when, when the impact fees are calculated, the amount of the impact fees is a measure of the impact on those entities by a certain type of use. So if you take existing use versus proposed use, and you calculate what impact fees would be due for each, then that difference is what the change in the impact is.
Yeah, I know the other argument is there is not unknown large impact, so.
Yes. Okay. So, and then I just want to point one up, point out one other thing here is that the developer was informed of the option of pursuing the affordable housing discount. It was an option for them, but they had indicated that they didn't want to go that route. But we just want to make them and everyone aware that if they did qualify for the affordable housing discount, the total impact fee amount, if they just qualified, got to the threshold of qualifying, would be $36,789.
A third on this, a third of the $94,000 roughly if they did qualify.
Right, and, you know, and I don't know how it would work out. It might work out they don't qualify, it might work out that they qualify lower than the threshold, it could end up $25,000.
So back to that whole example you gave with the Breckenridge development, giving the school system land and grading and whatnot. At 94,140, they potentially could choose to take that amount, look at the capital improvement plan, do something for that amount, satisfy something if the county commission agrees to it.
Yes, but the way I see it, it's six of one, a half dozen of the other. You're either going out and spending that amount directly with that, those entities, or you're just paying a little impact fee.
I mean, you may have more control over how it's spent perhaps.
Right.
But, I mean, so that's, there is an option there, this board finds it feels enough to be valid.
Right, and where I see it really coming into the benefit of the developer is like you take, like, the one subdivision that donated the acre and a half land to Parks and Rec. That, that acre and a half didn't fit in well to the development of the land. It became kind of a no man's land, useless. It fronted on a county road, and so they said, you know, it really doesn't fit in, but we, but we can donate it to Parks and Rec, it has value, and you're creditable. And I think that's where, you know, a developer would see that this provision is useful. All right, so next thing I want to talk about is the effect of the effect of a grant of exemption or waiver. I'm going to be going back to exhibit one, page 27. Okay. The developer is requesting a credit or offset or waiver from the impact fees due to past payment of property taxes and hotel motel taxes. However, there's no provision in the ordinance allowing for the past payment of real estate taxes, property taxes, or hotel motel taxes to be used as a credit or offset to impact fees. And then in addition, the finance director will testify after me that the real estate taxes, property taxes, and or hotel motel taxes are used for operating expenses by each of the entities receiving a portion of them. They are not designated for capital improvements under the county's capital improvement plan. So exhibit one, on the ordinance, page 27, it states that "If the county commission grants a waiver in whole or in part of impact fees otherwise due, the amount of the impact fees waived shall be provided by the county from non-impact fee funds, and such funds shall be deposited in the appropriate impact fee account within a reasonable period of time, consistent with the applicable county capital improvements program." So therefore, the county commission granted a complete waiver of impact fees in whole or in part, the county commission shall be obligated to pay the impact fees on behalf of the developer. That, that's.
So the taxpayer will pay the differential.
I guess so. Next item I want to talk about in exhibit one is on page eight. So in the ordinance, it states that a dwelling unit is one room or rooms connected together, constituting a separate independent housekeeping establishment for owner occupancy or rental, or at least on a weekly, monthly, or longer basis, and containing independent cooking, plumbing, and sleeping facilities. The proposed apartment dwelling units meet the definition of a dwelling. The ordinance provides no provision for the exemption of one-bedroom units, age-specific residential development, et cetera. The argument is that age restrictions will most likely result in poor children living in the community. It does not exempt the one-bedroom units, any restricted units from payment of impact fees. There's no provision for that. Historically, one-bedroom apartments and age-specific residential units, such as senior community living, et cetera, have paid impact fees. So if you turn to exhibit five, this is the impact fee calculation for Sage Place, which is a age restricted subdivision. I'm going to turn to, see here. Yeah, the third page back to Form 170, the top receipt for impact fees paid. So exhibit five is the impact fee calculation form and the receipt for impact fees paid for a duplex dwelling unit in the Shepherdstown Corporation Tax District, map 3B, parcel 19. The dwelling is located on lot 19 in Sage Place subdivision, which is an age-restricted subdivision, and we thought we saw in their covenants and restrictions, it's 50, a percentage of people there have to be 55 or older. A met, there has to be a minimum number of people there, 55 or older. County does not enforce covenants and restrictions, that's a contractual agreement between the property purchaser and the homeowners association in a sense. And I'll just point out that covenants restrictions can be changed at some point in the future if the HOA decides to change them. So impact fees and the amount of $7,141 were paid for this unit in that age-restricted subdivision. Want to turn to exhibit six. I'm going to go back 11 pages. Yeah, actually, it's probably more like maybe 13 pages. I'm going to this Form 170, receipt of impact fees, it'll say apartment number one at the top. at the top. Okay. So, um, exhibit six is the impact fee calculation forms and receipt for impact fees paid for the conversion of a commercial property to three apartment dwelling units. A multi-family, uh, a multi-family apartment building. The units are one-bedroom dwelling units. So on page eleven, Form one seventy, you'll see that apartment number one, located in Charlestown Corporation Tax District, tax map two, parcel seventy, paid one thousand ninety-eight dollars in impact fees after qualifying for the affordable housing. So that's the example you asked about, a conversion of a commercial use to apartments.
If they qualify the affordable housing.
Yes. They went through that process and they qualified. So, um, that's all the exhibits. So in closing, I'll just say that in accordance with Jefferson County Impact Fees Procedures Ordinance, developer projects required to pay the incremental increase of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in impact fees, we believe a developer does not qualify for an offset or an exemption from impact fees. And if the county commission waives the payment of impact fees, the county commission is obligated to pay the impact fees on behalf of the developer. That's our take, and, uh, Michelle was gonna be available to talk about the property taxes. I don't know if she was gonna be here via, right there, she is, she's virtual. So, Michelle, if you could explain, uh, who gets the property taxes, hotel motel taxes, and what they are used for, um, I would like you to do that.
Sure. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Jackson for earlier pointing out that the hotel occupancy tax is actually a fee that's imposed on the users. It's not actually imposed on the actual hotel operator. So, um, the fees that we collect for hotel occupancy tax are distributed percent to the CBB, forty-five percent, uh, roughly forty-five percent to Parks and Rec, about three percent to Historic Landmarks Commission, and the other two percent goes to Arts and Humanities Districts. Also wanna point out that, and once this property converts from hotel to a residential property or residential apartment building, we will no longer be collecting that fee. So those, those four entities will have a reduction in their revenues as a result. For real estate taxes, um, those collected to pay for ongoing operating costs of, um, the particular entities, um, his percentage calculation earlier was correct, about seventy-five percent of the taxes collected actually go to the Board of Education. A portion of that is for an excess that supports bonds for capital improvements. However, the impact fee rate that is calculated through the impact fee study, um, actually takes that bond into consideration and reduces the amount of the impact fee by the bonds that they're paying. So they're not paying twice for the capital improvements that they, you know, that they're paying for the real estate tax. Pretty much it. Did you have any other questions about any of those and everything?
No, I don't have any. Just a note, uh, we were just informed there will be a power of test, so don't run up and run out of here. Everybody be aware of that. Anyways, Dr. Richard Jackson was stepping right down. But, yeah, so I guess just prepare yourself in the next few minutes. Anything to the commissioners for, Michelle? Okay, so did you wanna respond to anything?
Yeah, just a couple.
Okay. Thank you. Roger.
Oh, I was, uh, I was told there would be no math, but that was quite a lot of math. Let me just make a couple points. Um, it seems to me that the focus of the coordinator is on, except for that one example of the conversion of a, I forget, but, but it wasn't a motel. So it's not factually analogous, strictly analogous to my situation. Again, I won't reiterate my argument there, but I think you understand the gist of it, in terms of the residential component, going from one type of residency to another type of residency. Um, and a lot of the focus here was on, again, new, new development, taking a piece of farmland and putting a structure on it, which we concede and which is valid, is that that has a substantial impact on the county. I would just, again, reiterate that you're required not only to follow your impact fee ordinance, but you're required, we're all required to obey West Virginia law. West Virginia law, and again, I would point out that the statute is strictly construed against the county and liberally in favor of the appellate. The, uh, the, um, Local Powers Act, again, states that such fees, impact fees, shall, shall not exceed a proportionate share of such costs required to accommodate such new development. Proportionate share is defined, and you can't get around this, and the county coordinator cannot get around this, is that the cost of capital fees that are reasonably attributed to the new development, which we would question what those are, less any credits or offsets for taxes. It doesn't matter to us that your ordinance does not specifically provide for taxes. State law requires you to, at, to consider the amount of taxes paid by this property towards capital improvements, and which the counties, that county, I believe, has just said that seventy-five percent of the taxes, the real estate and personal prop taxes paid by this property have gone to the school system.
Were they for capital improvements? If weren't, we just told them they're not for capital improvements, this for regular taxes, weren't they used for operating? Didn't we just hear that from the county finance director?
I'm not, I'm not sure what.
Is the argument saying that your capital improvements versus operating? You're, you're quoting state law here, isn't state law saying capital improvements?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding and looking at the website, the school board website, is seventy-five percent of the real estate taxes went to the school board, and that includes not only the regular levy, but the excess levies as well, which I understand are for capital. Am I missing?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there's some areas operating, I mean, sure, I would say overlap, but I think it's specific to capital improvements. I mean, you can argue all day long, is it all being used for capital improvements, or is it all being used for operating? I guess the question also here is, what is the justification based on our county ordinance that taxpayers funnel the difference of the impact fee? Where, where do you come from on that standpoint?
Well, that's, well, let me put it this way. That's an argument that's being made here, right, that, that we hadn't been presented with. I, I, I would like an opportunity to look at that. I'm not gonna take that on face value. Uh, I don't see why we should be blindsided with this argument and somehow say, what do you think about that? That's precisely why I have a problem. But we wanna proceed, and I understand that.
Did you read the entire county ordinance before coming here?
Yes, I did.
So did you, what did you have seen that part of the ordinance?
Well, I focused on the conversion part. I focused on the, I, and I also focused on the state law, which requires something different.
I think, I, I, if, if you're telling me you read the entire ordinance, but you didn't realize that the county would have to make up the difference in kind of taxpayers if this commission found an exemption or tried to give you a break, someone's still paying it, it just wouldn't be that you all are, any other developer, it would be county taxpayers making up the differential. So I, I, I wanna know from your standpoint, how you think that is a proper thing or argument?
I'm not gonna take the argument, which is an argument of the, of the coordinator. That's correct, that's correct.
Actually in the ordinance, though. So, you know, he's not making the ordinance, he's just floating the ordinance within its whole effect. So someone still has to pay the differential, and based on the ordinance, it's the taxpayers. So from your standpoint, how do you think that's proper?
And where, where, where is that in the, in the ordinance?
What was that, what was the second?
This would've been great, again, it would've been great if I'd had the opportunity to look at this. I would've been gladly willing to engage you on this issue.
I just, I mean, to be frank, you just told me you read the whole ordinance prior to coming here, so you must've seen that section of the ordinance.
I'm not that good, I'm not that good of a lawyer. I'm not that good of a lawyer, do I?
And I'm not an attorney either. I say, do we have the quote of the ordinance?
That, page twenty-seven, section five B, effective grant of exemption or waiver.
With, with exhibit, exhibit five?
In exhibit one, in the ordinance.
And then, page five?
Page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Section five B. One. Again, I'm, we're not.
Yeah, I used to say, we have to look at everything, we have to look at table, we have to look at our ordinance, and I should, we have to do this fairly across the board, so someone is still paying this impact fee, I mean, this board has not voted for or against this appeal yet. I just wanna lay this all out as to someone still pays it, you've read the whole ordinance prior to coming here.
Yes.
What's the justification for making taxpayers pay the differential? If you're, if, what testimony we just heard from the county engineer, we're exercising this impact fee across the board equally.
Yes, well, first of all, I don't have a justification as to why the statute was drafted this way. That was the choice of the.
But the ordinance is not statute.
Excuse me, the, that was the choice of the drafters of the statute. Um, I, I don't know what the policy, I don't know why the policy decision was made for that. I'm here to argue that under the law, which you have to follow, mandates that you can, that we're paying, our argument is, we're paying the impact fee, which you are legally allowed to assess against this property. We're not asking for a waiver of the fee, we're saying you're only entitled, the county, excuse me, the county is only entitled to assess this property for the incremental use of the property for parks, police, and AMT. Our, our, our position is, and we haven't heard any evidence to the contrary today, that there is an increased impact on those three services by the, uh, the change in the conversion.
There, there's a fundamental impact fee formula that's taken into account all variables coming to that determination, which we just heard in the previous testimony. If there are opportunities as far as affordable housing and so forth, that see reductions in the existing impact fee, or offer some sort of a exchange for capital improvements. Have you looked at those other opportunities?
Well, no, because we don't think, we, we think we're entitled to what the law requires, we're entitled to. I would say that those, the impact fee calculators are all focused on taking a raw piece of farmland and taking it to a, to, to, to a structure. There doesn't seem to be any analysis having been made here about the facts of this case, and why, what, and, and the analysis, which I think we're, we're entitled to, which is, what is the additional impact? That, again, let's focus on, let's exclude schools here for a second. But what is the additional?
I mean, here's the problem, is to look at this collective.
Okay.
You can't just say I'm gonna pay this part.
Okay, no, no. And part two is, the state law requires analysis of the taxes paid, past tense. I'm just reading from the statute, I'm not making this stuff up.
I understand, and I, I think I've been talking a lot too, I'm gonna give other commissioners, uh, opportunity, let me go to Commissioner Tab.
I don't wanna reiterate my argument.
Commissioner Tab, I know you've been sitting idle on the, you have any questions, here are statements?
No, I've been, uh, listening and eating crackers and paying attention, but I don't have any questions at this moment.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Jack?
So, um, or conversational, I guess, so converting, um, hotel, hotel, temporary stay to a, a living unit with now a kitchen would have impact on fire risk, and that's right, over the probability of a stove fire, uh, any type of fire appliances being in this unit now as an operational kitchen, efficiency unit, whatever it is, that's absent right now for a property.
That would be one additional factor, although one can argue is, one can argue is that the fact that the counterargument would be that without the kitchen in the unit, the people who are living there are going out and using the roads and services of the county, at the restaurants, et cetera, in the county, and therefore that would, you know, our argument is that there's no appreciable difference. It is true that there's a kitchen there, which could produce, I suppose, uh, uh, additional fire risk, but that's offset by the fact that you have the residents here who can't eat in their units, who are going out and using county services at restaurants, et cetera. So that would be the counter, but that, that, I, I, I see.
Anybody else?
Are you, are you all going to market these apartments to college students and Shepherd most, most likely?
And that's a point I think that needs consideration as well, is again, these are very small footprint, uh, places. The, the marketing targets are, I mean, we can't say, as was pointed out, even if we did try to restrict them, I, I, I agree with the point of the coordinator, is that the county really can't take that into account. And we're not, we're not proposing that to restrict these in any way. But in some sense, they're restricted by their very nature of being seven hundred, is it seven hundred and eighty-five square feet? Is that the, is that the footprint of the unit?
Sorry. What is your? Okay, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet for the one bedrooms, and it's three hundred point five square feet for the two students. So they're very small.
So, so, so I would agree, I think we would agree that the young professionals, uh, college students, again, it's, it's right down literally hundreds of feet away.
They're like, they're like raised a family.
Well, again, it's, you can't, you can't say they're not, you know, they single, single families, children, you know.
That's pretty big for New York City.
Yeah. But anyway, but, but the impact fee assessed against this smaller, stricter apartment is the same impact fee assessed against the much larger apartments.
It's not set.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm allowed to, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's one reason why I like them in short.
I should probably swear, I mean, the, you promised to say the whole truth, nothing about the truth, so I'll forget.
Yes. I was just gonna say, from being to your question, commissioner, in the hotel business now for thirty years, you know, we do get a lot of calls for fire, rescue, and police, just because of things that happen with our guests. Again, could be domestics, could be ambulances, could be sickness, could be drinking too much, could be any number of things. From doing that, and my personal opinion is, switching from fifty-one rooms to being in the hotel business to twenty-one apartments, again, my, my opinion is we will have less, because I keep track of all of those from being in the business. When they call, when the hotel gets called, I get called at the end. So I just wanna share that. I can't, I can't promise you that there could be a challenge with the kitchen, but I think that would be very few and far between based off of, I mean, if you know how to use a kitchen, you don't.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from with that argument.
Good, I, I'm gonna take issue, and again, it's, I'm gonna take issue if if I was arguing for the county commission about whether or not the section which was cited by the, uh, the coordinator, sort of as a boogeyman, frankly, um, that you're gonna have to, people have to do these taxes. I mean, the statute's pretty clear, to calculate the impact fees, I don't think that there's any waiver or exemption going on. The statute says, here's how you calculate your impact fees. We are arguing that we are going to pay the full impact fee, which the county is entitled to impose on this conversion.
What, what is that number in your eyes? Because if you, you're going, you said you're going to pay.
Our argument is.
What is, what's that? Just out of curiosity, do you, do you have, okay, so there you go, so you.
We were given no analysis by the, by, 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 uh, we're, we think we're entitled to the presumption of correctness, because we presented evidence to the coordinator. The coordinator just said, no, we're forgetting, zero. Now, after we've appealed, he's coming in with all these numbers. It would've been nice if we would've been presented with these numbers and we could've addressed them, but.
Do you want to take some time and continue this, or go to the numbers?
No, I think, I think we, I think the law is very, very clear. You cannot ignore the Local Powers Act, which I think that the coordinator's argument is, ignore the Local Powers Act, it hasn't, in fact, it is precisely the, the law that we want you to follow. All we're asking is that you follow the law.
Yeah, yeah, I have one last thing. You yourself said you can't deny that it may be an impact to the school system, yet you just said you should pay zero dollars for the impact fees.
Correct, because of the offset. Because of the over hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes, and which have gone to, uh, to, to the school system, um, and where the law requires you to take that into account.
Um, yeah, and I've tried not to particularly take a position of advocacy for or opposition to them, but I do want to point out a couple things. One, if you are looking at, um, a grant for of an exemption or a waiver, the, um, the ordinance does say, if, if you view it as a waiver, then you would have to pay, if you view it as an exemption, you would not. And of course, his argument is it's needed, there should be an offset. But he's basing that on, on the Local Powers Act, and that would be seven twenty-three, the definition of proportionate share. And to me, um, he's reading this one way. I think it could be read a different way. And that says, because it says proportionate share means the cost of capital improvements that are reasonably attributed to new development, less any creditor offsets, which is what he's saying that we should critique, but there are creditor offsets for construction or dedication of land or capital improvements, past or future payments made or were previously anticipated to be made by new development in the form of user fees, debt service, taxes. So he's concentrating on the taxes or other payments. of user fees, debt service, taxes, so, he's concentrating on the taxes or other payments, but I think he's kind of glossing over, and I'm not accusing him of any sleight of hand or anything, I'm just saying, this is difference in reading it, but to me, the, it's saying, past or future payments made or reasonably anticipated to be made by new development, and so, I think that what the statute is referring to is the sort of thing that Mr. Goodwin pointed out, that like, there was, was it, uh, DC Partners, had, the new development had done this work, and then that was credited, and so, I think that the statute and our ordinance are both consistent, as opposed to, um, Mr., Mr. Glenn's argument is, you should go back however many years, and look at the property taxes and things that were paid by that hotel, and, you know, I think you can read the, the proportionate share to just, I mean, it's more like the example that Mr. Goodwin gave, which is, they did something that's changed instead of creating impact.
And so, if, if a waiver is granted, the county has to pay a tax, if an exemption is, is allowed, then county taxpayers does not have.
Right, although, I think that in either of those cases, it would have to qualify under the definition of either waiver or exemption in the ordinance.
See, that's, that's another, so is this a waiver or exemption?
Well, it's the determination of the board to make, it isn't any, it's not.
Yeah. Um, just a, just a, uh, to, to respond to counsel, um, if you look at your, uh, impact fee, your new development includes conversions, so that's, so that's, that's , and I make that point in, in the appeal, also, again, I'll reiterate, Western Supreme Court has stated, that in construing tax statutes, which I believe this, I don't know if there's any argument that this is a tax statute, we, you are, you must construe it strictly against the county and liberally in favor, in favor of the taxpayer, so I think, I think counsel's point, my point is, you need, you, my position, our position, the counsel's position should be giving greater weight than the county's position, we are reading it literally, we are entitled to that, to that construction, under the law.
I have a question.
Do you have an argument, Commissioner Tab?
I would like to know, and I think I've heard it, but I, I want to make sure, what impact fees were paid when this building was originally constructed, and then I do think we need to know what would be due now, um, as, um, you know, calculated by the staff, I want to see the comparison between those two figures.
So, when was this building built, was that pre?
It was, the, the answer is very easy, it was built prior to impact fee.
That, that's what I thought had been said, but I wanted to make sure, thank you.
Two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that nineteen, nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah. Two thousand and three. Impact fee started in two thousand and three.
I don't, I don't know what decisions are, but keep in mind that the county is actively discussing an update to the impact fee based upon a study we just performed, so, these calculations are based upon the existing impact fee currently, correct? That could change at some point in the near future, once the county has had discussions and factored in, then you can totally. Any other questions? Do you have something you want to add?
No, I'm just gonna, Mr. Stoller, just earlier, just made a statement of what the size of, of the units are, I shared the three point five, seven fifty, and I think that that's a very key point to this, I mean, these units are exceptionally small, talking to an audience that's more interested in these are not people that have fixed.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen.
Hey, we can run around the bus all day and make arguments, it's all college students, our lease terms are increased, actually, I mean, seriously, I mean, but, it's very grand, it'd be like more off-campus dorm room, apartment situation, it's all college students, but, I mean.
No, I understand that.
So, what's the thinking here amongst?
I, I'll just start off, you know, Wayne, he said, they, they collect at four different levels, school, law enforcement, parks, and rec, and EMS, I, because we're moving from a fifty-one unit to twenty, and a one-bedroom apartment, who I believe is going to probably market more towards Shepherd College students, I don't see an increase in our school system, I don't see the impact to our school system, our law enforcement, uh, which reflects three percent of the multi-family, that could be argued either way, if you have, if you have twenty apartments full of college kids, eh, that they, who knows, they, they might be well-behaved college kids, okay?
They're gonna call me before they call me.
Yeah, and, and they'll, they'll probably call the front desk to, to complain. Yeah, um, you know, and then you take parks and rec, okay, um, you know, I just keep thinking these apartments are going to be used for college students, and, and, you know, they'll have, uh, free access to one of the nicest wellness centers in the state down, is down the street, so, I, I think it's highly unlikely that they would definitely use a parks or rec, uh, EMS, I don't see them using EMS more than they already were, personally, I like to call this an exemption, because I don't feel that the city could be either, so, so my, my thoughts are, and if you want to use that promotion, is that this project should be exempt from these seats, and, you know, double taxation, now, don't get me wrong, if they came in here and you were, as he said, taking farmer out and converting it to units, absolutely not, if you took a warehouse and converted from a warehouse to residential, absolutely not, but you're going from fifty-one units to twenty, so, you can argue all day long, this is hotel, motel, uh, residential, that, you're housing people, it's just a different type of housing, you know, it's, that's, that's an argument I'm not going to get into, um, but I, I think the, I don't see that there's an impact on this county, um, any more than what there already is with this being a hotel, so, I'm leaving that.
Got a motion?
That will be a motion.
Second?
Then, then.
I'll second it, because I have a discussion, okay, this ordinance was adopted initially eleven-six oh three, and then subsequent amendments to it, I, I, whatever comes out of this, I'm gonna have another discussion about some of the stuff in this ordinance, it may, it may or not be outdated in parks and need to be discussed, uh, I understand the argument being made, you're reducing a hotel down to twenty units, the hotel fundamentally does have other issues going on as far as county services, there's no denying that. I don't know, I, I can agree that a hundred percent down, just based upon the discussion by legal counsel here, that there could be a potential impact to schools, I, I'm open to looking at a potential proportioning, I don't know if I can agree a hundred percent in passing it, does anybody else have another discussion here? What are the qualifications for exemption?
Well.
If I'm looking at the county.
Yeah, what's, what's in? Yeah, what's in this ordinance, I think it's the hardship exemption that would be on page twelve, I don't know, Mr. Goodwin may have a different take on it.
Yeah, for hardship exemption, um, on page nine, it outlines the three criteria for qualifying for hardship, and, that's the one where I use the example of the woman who, obviously, she used the approved address, and I said that I don't believe that they qualified for it.
Yeah, I think you're right, too, same one other thing, when we talk about.
Is this, is this part of the hearing now, or are we, I'm not quite sure what.
Well, we have a discussion part, we're, we're, the motion on the table, we're just.
So, I can speak as well.
Uh, I think a discussion amongst us is we directed toward you, yes.
Okay.
There, you, anything else?
Just want to talk about, um, the incremental increase in the impact fees, the incremental impact, is that, as a hotel, commercial projects and hotel only pay law enforcement and emergency services impact fees, they do not pay schools, and they do not pay parks and rec, so, we would look at this project as if these twenty-two one units were actually being built new, because they had not paid two impact fees, the impact would be the whole amount, less what you might call a credit or impact fees that were paid by the commercial use of proceedings, and that's all we do with the calculation, so, residential pay those, schools, parks and rec, law enforcement, and emergency services, all for commercial, only pays two of those.
Okay, I'm just, quick thing. Yeah, I would just point out, that's not, that, that's, I, I would disagree with that analysis, that's not the correct, that's not, that's not what the law says.
Okay, I mean, that, that will be noted, I guess my thing is too, I think, Roger, you did what you did properly based on the current standard ordinance, I don't think you did anything wrong, from my standpoint, I, I want to look at this ordinance, it's maybe outdated in some parks, I think it would be good to have a discussion on it. So, there's a motion on the floor, so we can gather all of them.
I just want to point out, I think the only exemption that's considered is the hardship exemption.
Yeah, I mean, there's still a motion, it's definitely.
Or, I'm still discussing that, like, we can invent.
I'd like to make comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I think that the impact fees are due and payable, um, where it's changing, the, the building, uh, is not just changing its use, it's being, um, modified, we're going from a population that is basically visitors to residential, and that does have an impact on the community, uh, I think it follows our ordinance, and, you know, if we want to change something, we will have to work on that, um, for this particular situation, or some other situation that may come up, but right now, the way the ordinance is written, I feel the impact fee is, the applicant should be required to pay the impact fee.
Okay, so, we're still on the discussion page, a motion on the table, so.
That's right.
Okay, so, is there any more discussion on this specific motion, so, all those in favor of approving the motion to dissolve all the impact fees, say aye, opposed, no?
No.
Okay, so, the motion fails four to one. Okay, so, is there any more motions that need to come out of this hearing? Commissioner Tab, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
So, essentially, we're looking for a decision here, I want to, based, I hate to say it, I actually agree with Commissioner Tab right now, how our ordinance is laid out, I don't think, I don't think we can literally provide an exemption or waiver based upon this current state ordinance, I want to reapproach this ordinance at a later date, but based upon it as it lays now, I move that we deny the appeal.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, just understand that there is still work at the county towards impact fees, they may go up, they may go down, I don't know, I want to relook at the ordinance too, at a soon-to-be-determined date, that's where my standpoint is, I think there are some issues that we need to look at this and update some of this, as it's been updated through the last few years since two thousand and three, that's where I'll, this will stop, any other discussion by anybody? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion passes four to one, thank you, guys. Uh, I think that's all we can have today. I'll leave that. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna come back next week and do that, okay? So, I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. We're adjourned.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
God.